Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for May 1st. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as I hear, some people have, we have the hearing assistance little phones over there, and if you, a couple of people have them, you might want to sit a little bit farther apart because we discover when people are together, sometimes we get a little feedback. Stephen, do you have any announcements?
Sorry, and we had talked about it the other day, and I don't remember where it is. So hopefully when I'm giving the other ones, you can remember.
Oh, probably not.
The shops?
Just, we did send out an all-call today, but just a reminder that town meeting is two nights, starts at 7:00 in the gym on both nights. You'll have to register separately for both nights, so even if you come and register on the first night, you'll still need to come back and register on the second night because obviously it's a different crowd and, you know, you get your voting card each night. The construction on Converse Street is going well, but just, we did have a water issue there today, so just a reminder to drivers to just be careful and mindful of the detail officers and the crews out there. And that's about it for now.
Any other announcements, Select Board meeting, Select Board residents?
Yeah, I got a note today that Long Meadow was among 41 communities, or organizations actually, across the state that received part of a grant from the Attorney General's office. It's the school system to prevent opioid addiction under a new initiative from the Attorney General's office. It's, should be notable that within Hampton County, it's Agawam, Westfield, and Long Meadow Public Schools, the only schools that received it, and there's another 38, mostly in eastern Massachusetts, so I think it's a great for our town.
All right, any resident comments?
(Inaudible)
No, that's right, you might be the only one tonight. We have a lot of interviews, that's why we have a large audience.
Richard Elias, 608 Frank Smith Road, members of the Select Board and residents and voters, hopefully, of Long Meadow. On the 9th and 10th, we're going to have a town meeting. Some, I've heard some people say, "Why two nights?" And that's really simple. Remember where we're from. This is Massachusetts, and we threw out the crown because they wouldn't listen to us. There aren't that many towns still left in Massachusetts that has a direct reference to the people, and I think it's laudable that the Select Board would take the time to have two things because the number of warrant articles were so great, and to make sure that everybody has the time to make their feelings be known on the thing. The other thing is, the big question is the public works. I'm not going to say I'm for it or against it, I will say it's necessary. When the people in the town go to vote on this, I would like to have them take a look to the right and to the left before they raise their card, because I can almost guarantee at least one or two or maybe three people will have said, "Not in my backyard," and, "Oh, can't touch our athletic fields or school fields for this." And that's why it's costing us $3 million more than it's necessary. But that's what it is, the people's voice, and if they want to do it, but if you want to do it, you're going to have to pay for it, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other resident comments? Okay, I have a lot of Select Board comments, but we're going to move those down because we have a lot of people waiting to be interviewed. So why don't we start with the Conservation Commission? We have Andrea Chason and David Dumas, who want to both come up since we'll do it together. And my understood, there's two one-year associate terms expiring and two three-year terms. And we'll start with you, Andrea, because you've already, you just interviewed like three weeks ago, and now you have to do it again because your term expired. So thank you for coming in again.
So Andrea Chason, I live at 236 Crestview Circle. I was very happily appointed for the three months left of somebody's term, I guess, and I've been to a couple of meetings and a wonderful site visit down at the Wildlife Preserves. I forget what it's, Franny's doing?
Meadows.
Yeah, the Meadows, thanks. I need help remembering what I did. And I'm in the beginnings of just learning what the Conservation Commission does, and I'm very excited about it, so I'd like to continue doing the work, and it seems like a great group of people that are part of it, so.
And are you going for the one-year associate term or one of the three-year terms?
Does it make a difference? I'm not sure. I mean, I guess I'll go for the two-year term since it lessens the need to...
Yeah, because that would be a voting, the associate would not be a voting, right?
They should both be going for the...
Three-year term, okay, sounds good. That decision was made for you. Thank you. Any questions for her? No? All right, David, you want to tell us your address and why you're interested in the Conservation?
David Dumay, 76 Sheffield Ave., and I will be going for the three-year term if allowed. And so this will be my, if elected, all right, I'll be, my, they'll be going on seven years, so it's a continuing education for me. It's definitely been a learning experience, and I enjoy it a lot, and I just would like to continue in that manner.
Thank you.
It's been very rewarding.
And it's an exciting time going with the project that's starting, I think, in June, the federal project that will make it like a regional educational center, which is very exciting.
Yeah, it's definitely...
Any questions?
Just a quick, David, I just, you've been on the board Conservation Commission for a while. One of the potential issues, and one of the issues I hope is going to come up in the fall, is going to be, what do we do with our current DPW site after it's abandoned? That's my hope. You know, do you have any understanding of, because it's contiguous with some conservation land or near some conservation lands in a flood plain, does any of that have anything to do with the Conservation Commission or not?
I think from a permitting standpoint, because of its proximity to various wetlands, I believe there'd be some type of review, at least, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, I think in the future, we're going to see a, maybe even a demand, but certainly a push to take some of the gorgeous conservation land that we have and put it into more active recreation. I understand it can possibly be done with legislative, but do you have any thoughts on that? You've been on there nine years, you've seen the town and the direction we're going, some of the decisions we're making today because of recreational, and yet we have unbelievable amount of acres under conservation that could be used for much more active recreation without adversely, seemingly adversely affecting the land since a lot of it's under agricultural use right now.
Correct. Yeah, actually, to be honest with you, I was, there's, I have two things in mind, is one is that the Riverfront Park, in my opinion, is a little bit underutilized in the sense that we used to have picnic tables down there, and they were wooden, I think, and they kind of got maybe stolen or disappeared somehow. And so I personally, I'd love to see some type of effort put into maybe either revitalizing from, just from a picnic area standpoint, and just making it more accessible to people to be, go down and use. And I was actually at a tree committee meeting not too long ago, where I was talking about it with the DPW tree warden, just because I was at the meeting by chance, whether or not like cement picnic tables or something more sturdy. So that's just one idea that I was thinking about, even, maybe even approaching from a CPC standpoint. And then also from like a trail usage standpoint, obviously with Silvio Conti, with the efforts that they are doing, whether we can make some type of connections to the trails that are existing on their land. Because it's interesting, because if you go through some of the trails that are on conservation land, they're about this narrow, and you've got poison ivy to the left and poison ivy to the right, and then as soon as you go over a certain portion of it, it's like a little bit wider. It's just, I think we could do a better job from a maintenance standpoint to make it more accessible, to your point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
And that question was for both of you.
Yeah, actually, I mean, the one thought that I had, I agree with you, we have a lot of really wonderful conservation land, and there are different models around the country that are using it in such a way that we encourage respectful recreational use and use it much more as a learning opportunity for different groups, so...
All right, well, it opens up grants, too. There's a lot of grant money that we could use for riverfront development that we're not touching because of the, you know, locking it in the way we have. That's just, just a general question. I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow, but eventually the pressure's going to be fairly significant being placed on this community to expand uses on some of that land.
I think we should.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, and we'll let you know at our next meeting when we vote.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. John Skypack for Capitol Planning. Could you tell us what street you're from and why you want to be part of Capitol Planning?
John Skypack, 157 Coventry Lane. About a week ago, my neighbor and friend Steve Metz, who is the chairman of the Capitol Planning Committee, invited me over to talk about an opportunity and I guess a open slot on the committee. So he shared with me some of the activities that they've been handling over the years and asked if I'd be interested. I said, after thinking about it, I said, "Yes, it fits somewhat in my background." Initially, in my early career, I was involved in city planning. More recently, in a longer period of time, I was a lender in investment in commercial real estate with several banks and insurance companies. You know, for me, the important thing is, the town is facing many investment decisions going forward, it's, these are critical resources for the community. The Capitol Planning Committee dovetails with that, with these decisions, and I thought at this point it would be a very useful use of my time to be involved in this, with this group. It also dovetails a little bit with a group that I volunteer with, SCORE, they're a part of the, they're a volunteer organization with the SBA, so there's a tangential and fit with what the committee does as well.
Thank you for volunteering.
Glad to be here.
Any questions?
Well, I just, you know, the SCORE organization, I know how, what a help it is to people. I just recently talked to someone who, you know, had really appreciated all the help she got through that organization, and so, you know, that's a great background, you know, for this kind of a Capitol Planning thing.
We're looking for volunteers as well, so...
So, well, thank you for volunteering.
How many years were you involved in the community planning?
City planning.
City planning, okay.
Yeah, just back in the late '70s, early '80s, about four years.
Okay. Did you study that in school?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No way.
Okay.
No way, no way I'm going to ask a question.
Thanks, Mark.
I guess you know each other, okay. All right, well, thank you very much, and we will let you know, and I guess you're the, one of the three-year terms, so we appreciate you coming forward.
You're welcome, and thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, so Liz Bone, you're up here for two, so I thought we would just interview her for Energy Task Force and Recycling Commission at the same time. So you want to tell us why you're interested in both of these?
Sure, so, verse 34, Elizabeth's Circle. Let's see, I've been on the Recycling Commission for maybe like 10 years now.
Wow.
I enjoy creating events in town to help recycle. I really like, want to get the whole town on board to recycle, commercial, residential, make sure everyone's, if we could do 100%, that would be perfect. And for the Energy Task Force, I've been working with, on the school committee side of it, because I'm also on the school committee, and my term is over in June, so I'd like to continue it as perhaps a, an appointment of the Select Board or as a, I don't even know what position it would be, but I think we're starting to make headwind in all the, I don't know, with the streetlights and with the policies that we are setting that we can really start getting the town to save energy, save money.
That's good. Any questions?
My only question, how'd you do on Saturday with the shredding?
We did excellent. We had about 200 cars, we shredded about 10,000 pounds of paper.
Wow.
That's great.
Yep.
That's great. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, and Jeffrey Rintul for Parks and Rec Commission.
Jeff Rintul, 27 Cranwell Lane. I have been on the Park and Rec Board for the past three years, and I would like to continue my work on the park board. My family has utilized the services of the Park and Rec Department from basically the day my daughter, my wife went back to work, my daughter was born, to current. My son plays soccer both in the summer, or excuse me, in the spring and fall. He plays baseball throughout the year, and they very heavily utilize all the programs offered. I find that the first three years, you kind of learn in a municipality how things work, and now, I hope in my next term, to start making a positive impact in some of the things that are directly related to the Park and Rec Department.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, so good, what are some of the things that you were involved in that you found, you know, worth your time, and some of the things that you're looking forward to, if you...
So what I found to be extremely rewarding was the, and I will not take credit for the tennis courts, but the, the work and the effort of the board that was there and the members on it before my time, and the kind of the coming to of the construction and the grand opening of this great tennis facility. I personally don't play tennis, but I know for folks in town to go by on a Tuesday night at 8:30 and the lights are on and there's seven courts being used is just to my mind a success, and, you know, even though I don't play, was a great opportunity to see that. I also had opportunities to work for one of my coworker, or my counterparts on the park board, to watch the CPC process go of, you know, kind of going through applications and seeing how that goes, and learn a little bit more about how the process goes. My goal, or my hope would be to start to look at the Wolf Swamp Fields to make some improvements to that facility, noting the current condition of it now. So those are, those are kind of my, where I've been, where I've seen, and where I'd like to go.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Mark?
Jeff, I'm going to start by giving my disclaimers. My disclaimers are, you're the first person to come before us from seeking reappointment to the Park Commission since the event, which is a vote at the last town meeting that I can talk of, and it's the elephant on the table, so, or elephant in the room. And that is the vote by the Park Commission to support a, you know, unsuccessfully, I guess, a placement of the senior center in Bliss Park, and, and the perception, at least based on comments and notes I got from people, is that, is the Park Commission protecting our parks? And so I guess I'm just asking you a little bit about what your thoughts are about that, if indeed, you know, how you balance protecting the parks for parks versus using the parks for, you know, Bliss Park for adult center or whatever may happen down the future, and I think that concerns a lot of people in town. I will also, because it's ancient history, and people may not recognize it, go back a little bit in ancient history, that prior to our charter change, park commissioners were independently elected, and one of the issues that supported the charter change was when the park commissioners opposing what people wanted to do in town, cut down many, many, many trees at Turner Fields and, you know, made significant changes after people thought they shouldn't. And so I guess my question is, do you really, where's the park, where should the park commissioner be and, the park commission be and the park board, and should they be supporting parks for parks, or should they just be supporting whatever happens?
So I'll try to answer, there's several questions in here, so I'll try to get, I'll try to hit them all, and please correct me if I, or steer me back on track, but, so yes, I was a part of the vote for Bliss Park to support the senior center there, and one of the things that I will say is, I heard loud and clear from the voters at the town meeting that the parklands are super precious to them, whether it's Bliss Park, whether it's Greenwood Park, or Turner Park. And to my thinking, the reason I voted for that was, I thought that there was a lot of synergy going with that group of people, the seniors to come in and there would be an opportunity for Park and Rec to kind of take and work with that. That being said, I think as a, my whole purpose in doing community service was to say, better Long Meadow as a community, and I heard loud and clear from my constituents in town that that's not something that they wanted to have happen, so that was something that I learned and noted. I do think that we need to keep our parks as protected as possible. I live right next door to Turner Park, I did not hear, I was not living in that house when, I know the trees were cut down for the baseball fields. I will say my son enjoys the baseball fields, but I did, I wasn't as close to it as I am now, so I definitely understand that there was, I'll say, a ruckus about the whole situation, and apparently they were just gone one day, and it was, it was quite an uproar, so, point taken. I think that having the opportunity to look at what we have now and say, catalog it, and, you know, listening to the Conservation Commission, there is a lot of places in this town that we have, whether it's Conservation Commission or parkland, that we need to make sure our town knows and keeps in line, because I do think that there's opportunities that will go on the wayside, and once it's gone, it's gone. If it's developed, it's no longer there. So to me, that's something that we really want to try and keep locked in as much as we can, so I have a keener sense of making sure that that land and the parkland is, in fact, protected by us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your answer.
No problem.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for your service.
Thank you.
All right, and for Tree Committee, Wayne Otani.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Otani, 200 West Road, Long Meadow here in town, along the river. I'd like to apply for the Tree Committee, based on some of my background, being a Massachusetts arborist, also an arboriculture and park management degree, University of Mass, Stockbridge. So I hope I can add and help out with anything that the Tree Committee asks of me.
Any questions?
Well, are you currently serving?
Yes, conservation.
Oh, conservation, so you're moving to tree, to the, okay.
No, he's, you're going to stay on conservation.
I'm staying on conservation, yes.
Stay on conservation, okay, and you're going to Tree Committee. All right, well, I can't think of more qualified, you know, the Stockbridge School has a great reputation, and you know, your family's been involved in tree service in town for a long time, and, you know, there are a lot of trees, you know, people are concerned about, you know, saving some of the older trees, some of the trees that are, well, they're doing all that tree work down by the river, that's kind of interesting. I don't, we probably don't have anything to do with that, but it's interesting to look at the kind of species they're bringing in, the kinds of things they're taking out, and, you know, people can go and buy any sort of tree and bring it into the town, and it can really start changing things, you know, if they're an invasive species, and so, all right, well, that's the only thing, you know...
Well, I would like to add to that, that I was part of planting a lot of the trees in town through my father's contract when he was working with the town, so I'd like to instill some of that into the committee also. That would be something I like to spearhead.
Planting, good, thank you.
Mark?
Wayne, just a quick, I guess, I don't know if it's a professional opinion, you know, it's kind of like talking to the doctor at a cocktail party, but since October of 2011, how's the town's been doing in terms of recovering, the trees been doing, and I mean, you know, if you recall, we had a, some dire predictions about all the trees that were so badly cut they weren't going to survive. How are we doing?
It would be specific to each tree. The trees that were weak prior to the October storm, depending on how old they are and the starch reserves, it could take them another four or five years to see decline. Something vigorous, younger, that is going to recover a lot better. So to answer your question, it's kind of vague in that some trees are going to make it and some trees aren't. What I was concerned about was the crowns were removed due to the storm, and now you have what's called sprouts, and where those sprouts are attached could be decay. So they're going to try to replace what they lost after the storm, they're going to get long and leggy, they'll be attached to a rotted part of the plant. So there are structural issues along with also decline. So these are the things that we would have to go to individual trees on a survey just to watch for hazards to the town and whatnot. So with my experience, hopefully I can help out with some of the surveys that's going on, and determine which trees, you know, don't make it, and hopefully plant something in its place. Thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, I've been, I spoke out for many years on the trees in town. I know we, well, we love our beautiful tree-lined streets, but what I see out there is widowmakers. I mean, half the trees on Long Meadow Street seem like they're either dead or they're going, they're gutted out, and it's long been my concern that we're not proactive enough in realizing the fact that a tree eventually matures out and it's time to replace them.
Correct.
And come back with a suitable variety. I mean, we've got trees under power lines that look like, you know, hawed sticks, I mean, there's no tree there. It's almost a disgusting example of vegetation when you go by after the power company comes by. It's a long-range problem, or a long-range problem and solution, but what's your thoughts on, you're certified arborist.
Correct.
You're looking at trees every day from a professional eye.
The power lines, to address that, always been a contention. The power company does not own a tree. Their responsibility is to clear the wires and make sure that residents have power. Town wants tree-belt trees, so the selective species and plant underneath those wires has to be done correctly. So to plant a large canopy tree under wires, it really doesn't make any sense in the long term. So selective planting underneath wires or go underground. So you have to work with the utilities and work with the existing trees as best as possible. The trees that are damaged is a liability, and the town does not want a liability, so they need to rely on professionals to make an assessment on each individual tree, on whether it's a high-risk or low-risk tree.
Do you foresee the, the Tree Committee becoming more involved in educating the town officials to the liability associated with what you guys are seeing?
Yes, and I think when I was talking to the tree warden, there is a tree survey going on, and that survey will consist of exactly what you're looking for, I believe. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll be voting next week, and we'll let you know that you're, when you're on the committee.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Great evening, thank you.
All right, and there is one more person to be interviewed, but he's running late from work. I don't believe he's here, so we're going to go ahead and go down to the Coal Vess Group Parking Plan. Would you like to come up?
I remember what the announcement was.
Oh, what?
DPW open house on Sunday from 12 to 2.
Oh, okay, well, what else is it?
I'll have to take one of the town manager reports.
Okay, you mentioned during that, I thought it was last Sunday.
Is that adequate? I have an easy...
That would be better.
We, well, we're talking about the cameras, but you'd be able to see also, so, they'll be able to catch it there?
Is that camera blind?
Yeah.
My name is Peter LaPointe, I'm a project manager for the Coal Vess Group. We acquired the Hampton Bank property in 2015, July of 2015, and at the moment, the bank space is vacant, the former vision space is vacant, and that space has been leased to Alex Bagel Shop. Alex is here this evening with his son. We are here, I guess, to get some input from you. We have proposed to upgrade the parking, it's off-street parking, but it's also off-site parking for us, it's within the public right-of-way, that's immediately in front of our building. There are 13 parking spaces there today, they're parallel parking spaces, and not only do they serve our building and the three tenant spaces there, they also serve the mobile station, and the owner of the mobile station is here with us tonight also. The, the spaces are difficult to get in and out of in that they're parallel and people have to pull forward and back in, so we were looking for some way to, to make the parking more expeditious, we were looking for some way to add parking... So we were looking for some way to, to make the parking more expeditious. We were looking for some way to add parking. And, and our company had agreed to pay for those improvements, and they are public improvements within the public right-of-way, and developed a plan and ran that plan by town staff, your town engineer, Department of Public Works. We've gone to the Tree Committee. We go to the Planning Board for an informational briefing, and their input Wednesday night. And our, my understanding is we come back to you on the 15th for a vote. And what we are proposing to do is make the parking angle parking instead of parallel parking, which would allow people to maneuver in and out more quickly. And, and in so doing, we would add parking spaces. We would get 25 parking spaces instead of the 13 that are there today. In order to do that, we would have to push the pavement closer to our site, which means the sidewalk that's in front of our building would actually move partially or, or in, in one section, I think, completely onto our property. So we were giving up front yard in that sense, and we would expand the parking closer to Route 5 on the other side, which would require a guardrail and the reconstruction of about 125 feet of retaining wall. In, in, in doing that, we would, we would replace the damaged concrete sidewalk pads that are below the retaining wall at the, the bus stop. We would also pour new sidewalk in front of our building, which is the primary pedestrian right-of-way. The idea was to keep people up away from Route 5 and rather than down where the bus stop is. And in completing that sidewalk out onto Bliss Street, we would install a handicap ramp, an ADA-compliant access ramp. The, one of the questions that was raised would be the look of the wall. I've got a couple of these. I can pass them around.
Thank you.
But what we're proposing to do is, is replace the wall that's there with a structural wall, because it would average a little over three feet high, and would require a structural engineer's seal in order to construct it. That would be a structurally, a structural wall that we, a design we could get sealed. It's various sizes of block rather than a uniform size all the way across, and in a variety of color. And that actually is the color we had picked out of the catalog, as being most like what's there now. The wall does not, I think the sketch you saw a few weeks ago showed a, a chain link, a four-foot-high chain-link fence on top, which we had installed, assuming code would, would require that. The building commissioner has indicated that the code would not require that, so the, the fence has been deleted from the design in front of us.
You finished with your presentation then?
We are. I just, we're here to answer any questions you have.
Richard, did you have any questions?
Just looking, is it steel-backed timber guard ground?
There, there would be steel back there. We hid it. We think we can put a one-by stain the same color on the back so that you're not looking at the steel. The steel looked ugly from the roadside.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, as, as I look at this diagram down here, it, it looks like you're taking the sidewalk past the buildings, right?
Yes.
And then connecting to the other sidewalk on the other side of the next street. But when I look at this, then wouldn't there be an incline from the sidewalk, or is it?
There's a grade change, but it's not so, and not really any more severe than it is today. As you drop from the finished floor elevation at the front of our building down to the, the grade at Bliss Street, there is a, there is a slope, I guess is the right word. I have with me Dana Steele, who is our project engineer.
All right, so it's not going to create a problem in terms of ADA compliance for wheelchairs with that slope?
No, that's correct. The, we were asked to, Dana Steele with JR Russo and Associates, we were asked to, to flatten the grade of the, of the sidewalks so that it was accessible. And so that, that required lowering the grade and, and replacing the walk further back going up Bliss Street, as well as heading, heading towards the building. So they'll be all at a maximum slope of 5% or 1, 1 in 20.
Okay, that looks good. And I guess it's kind of hard to know about the, with these, you know, how much more traffic? Is there any ideas on how much more traffic we'd be getting through this parking area?
We're, we're very hopeful that Alex will create more traffic than the Vision store did. We, we also anticipate that the traffic will be quick turnover traffic. If you go there in the morning and watch, his customers going in and out, they come in, get bagels, come back out, get in the car and leave. And we think the, the angle parking will make that possible, where the parallel parking would begin to queue cars up behind the guy trying to get into a space. Certainly, the, the number of parking spaces, 25 parking spaces in relationship to, to the traffic on Route 5 is fairly insignificant. The exit is out onto Bliss Street to a traffic light. So we're not, we're not blocking traffic on a street. We're not blocking traffic at an intersection. Everybody's queued up on-site before, until that light changes.
Okay, and the, the only way in is from Bel Airs at the street the other side?
Yes.
And, and that other road coming out to Long Meadow Street's just an exit also?
Right, and that's the exit that's there today. It takes you from the gas station parking lot out onto Route 5. But once you're into the, into the aisle in front of our building, you can't get back there, because the traffic is only one way toward Bliss.
Okay, and the ADA ramp is going from the parking lot up to the building, is that?
The, the ADA ramp is from Bliss Street, heading up to the building, and.
Okay.
But all the walks will be ADA compliant.
Okay, great. And so then from the parking lot, there's no, it's, it's equal, it's at the same level as the sidewalk, pretty much?
The parking lot is, yeah, is also at the same, same elevation.
Okay.
They're, they're parallel with one another.
So there won't be any steps? Will they park? There just no steps? They can walk right into the bagel shop?
The only step will be the curb, and, and at the accessible parking spaces in front of the main building, there is a ramp there as well that's flush with the pavement at that, at the hatched area. So you can, if you can walk, walk through in that location, then there's no curb to, to.
And then I, you know, I admit I'm not as familiar with the building, but, and then from the sidewalk into the building, there's no barriers there either, right?
Correct. The, the walks are, would be flush with the finished floor of the building, no steps.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Mark?
Tom, I have some pictures. I, I went to the building a couple of weeks ago when we first got this and took a whole bunch of pictures, because I, I'm a little bit concerned of, so I just have a series of questions. But my, my biggest question is, why did this plan have anything to do with the tree across the street that's being replaced?
That was up to the Tree Committee. We, in order to develop this plan, we're taking out a tree that's immediately.
A pretty substantial tree, right. I've got, I've got in a picture, right.
And we went to the Tree Committee with the, the plan of development, the parking improvement plan. And their response was, if you're taking down that tree, we'd like you to put a three-inch caliper tree, take down the dying tree across the street, and then supply and install a three-inch caliper tree in its place.
Okay, so it was some advice of the Tree Committee?
Of course.
It was their direction, and I did what you did. I actually had to go out and look at the tree across the street.
That's, that's fine. I guess, I guess my, my biggest question is why? I, you know, the buildings had retail space there before. It had a bank, had a, you know, eyeglass store. You know, with all due respect, I've been to Alex's Bagel a bunch of times. You know, if they got eight customers in their old store, you know, you couldn't fit them in there. And so they were in the neighborhood of, you know, half a dozen kind of cars. And yes, we'd like to encourage more business, but from my perspective, this is a, a significant change. I mean, what I see here is a, a low wall with a nice gentle slope of grass up to the parking lot, which from the street view, and I took a camera from where I was standing, I'm six feet tall, you really can't see the, the driveway area, because you, it's, there's a grassy slope that comes up over. And we're going to turn it into, from the street view, we're going to see a parking lot. We're literally paving that whole tree belt, that, you know, taking out the tree belt that's the town land and putting in a.
It's all town.
Pavement. And the question is, why? I mean, do we really need to go from 13 to 26?
Right, there are only 13 parking spaces, and those 13 spaces support, support four commercial tenant spaces. The mobile station, Alex's, the vacant space that used to be the bank, and the Fred Astaire corporate offices, which are around the corner.
Right.
At any given point during the day now, you can go into that lot, and we've got two vacant spaces. And the 13 spaces are half-occupied or better.
Well, much of that is from the gas station who uses it for parking for cars. And when in fact, you know, I, I perceive, and I'm not an official here, you know, in terms of park, but their frontage is Bel Air, and yet they use that because they can, because it's available. But my sense is that that's not, you know, and, and they've had cars on, on, on the tree belt there, on the trees, on the grass. And we've had complaints about it. They complained to me. And so, you know, including the, the gas station, to my mind, is kind of an unfair loading up the, the site. And, and I, you know, if it was up to me, I'd rather waive the requirement for more spots than take over the town's tree belt to pave it. You know, we, we, we're talking, I mean, we've got a, an article coming up before a town meeting talking about groundwater and, and paved area, and we need to reduce the amount of paved area in town, and so that the rain and water soaks into the ground instead of going into our storm systems. This is just increasing that. I mean, it just counter to what we're trying to do. I guess, to me, I don't see the compelling argument to set a precedent here for taking over town land, right-of-way land for a parking lot, when what we've got seems to work well. When in fact, you know, if you did the half of the lot between the, what's now there parallel in the building, could you actually get more angled in spots or just angle them into the town? That's the, that's my first issue, and it's not really questions I'm asking as much as telling you how I feel. The other area, I will say, is, as a, as a resident of town, I, I perceived for a long time that the exit from there is, at times, problems, a, a problem. And, and I say that because if there are cars coming down Bliss Road and cars coming out of that parking area, it, you know, you've now got a five-way stop sign, or stop, or intersection there, and it's sometimes problematic. I mean, when I saw it, the first question I asked the town manager is, why don't we make that one way the other way and have cars exiting on Bel Air? He said, well, we looked at it, but we didn't think it was the right thing to do. I mean, I, from my perspective, you'd be coming from, I guess, going westbound on Bliss, turn into that parking area. So you're turning away from the intersection, the exit on Bel Air, where there's plenty of places to get out, and then cars can go anywhere they want to. So between the problem of paving over the, the, the tree belt, getting rid of the grass and grassy slope, and, and, you know, not using this opportunity to alleviate what I'll say is a, a fifth row or fifth driveway coming into that intersection, I see is really problematic. I mean, I think ultimately, the planning commission's also got to act on this, I guess. And, and I'll be interested to see how they take this approach as well. But, you know, I, I'm just not sure why we want to grant a waiver for town land to pave it. It's, it's not decorative, it's nothing else, and that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you, Mark.
Where's the existing property line for the town?
It's on back of sidewalk.
Back of sidewalk.
Approximately, it kind of runs through.
The back of this walk, you can see, it's clearer on this one. So the, the large dotted line, that's the property.
Okay, that's property line, okay.
So we're talking about taking the public walk and pushing it back.
All right.
And what DPW says, but this is the pedestrian way. They don't want this to become a pedestrian way.
Right. Stephen, do you happen to know that, that particular intersection for the traffic light? Is that a looped intersection, or is it just timer?
I think it's just timer.
Just timer?
But that's one of the ones we are looking to address, this part of Long Meadow Street tip project.
Okay. Did I, I was just wondering, because it, it was, well, the placement of that loop would be pretty critical, because it's going to have a lot of traffic coming out on a short part of that air change, and I just wondered how it was set up now.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll wait till then. Because I was going to talk more generally about the intersection.
Okay, how about snow and ice control?
I don't know where they stack it now.
We, we have, the property owner has always plowed that area, even though it is town land. And that's, I should probably make that clear. What we're talking about here is a public improvement on public land paid for with private funds. We're not taking title to the land. It is still public parking. Anybody can use it. The, the gas station customers can use it. People from St. Mary's can use it on Sunday or, or holy days of obligation. They can come over here and park. The, the intersection, what, what we've done is, is narrowed the driveway out of this parking area onto Bliss Street. And with the stop sign and the stop bar, the first car in line sits there just like the car in line on Bliss Street and waits for the light to turn. The first car in line coming out of this parking lot will be the first one in the queue, followed by the people on Bliss Street, so everybody else in this parking lot waits.
Why do you assume that? I mean, they're, they're not queuing in, there, there's no signage, there's no, you've got.
It works, it works perfectly, and apparently it has.
It doesn't work perfectly. I'm a resident, it doesn't work perfectly.
The stop bar on Bliss Street is behind this driveway, so that the first car on Bliss Street waiting for the light to change is sitting well behind this driveway. So the first car in the queue on this driveway trying to exit this site is the first car in line at the light. The, the other thing we've done is narrowed and sort of twisted the throat of that driveway to discourage people, make it almost impossible to make a left turn out of that driveway or make a right turn into that driveway off Bliss Street. So that you're directed out to, into the intersection and, and onto Long Meadow.
It doesn't work as well as we think it should work.
Well, actually, that's part of the problem is currently, the way it is, the way it is set up now, it's just, is, is problematic. So it's not as if we're trying to preserve a beautiful part of town that's working perfectly. I had a couple of questions, and they probably would go to the town manager.
I was still talking.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I have the table?
You can go back to the ice and snow, yes.
Stephen, did you get any input from DPW, anything concerning this?
We did review it with our traffic committee, as well as, you know, police, fire, public safety. So we did a fairly comprehensive review. We gave them a comprehensive set of comments, so yeah, we did go through it all. That's those things I was going to talk about, but you guys, I can get to that in a little bit.
Well, the one thing that comes to mind is that the, the snowstack area, in a, in a heavy storm, I don't know what the plans, you'd almost have to truck snow out of there.
Right.
There's no room to put it, unless you're going to cut your.
Absolutely. It's got to be moved off-site. You get more than two inches, it gets hauled away.
Yeah, okay, so if everybody's aware of that, now is that, is that liability going to fall back on the town?
No, I, I think what we're leading towards is a license agreement, like we have with Bay Path, and like we have with other people. Like Bay Path just came in and made, remember we just did the amendment to their existing license agreement to do sidewalk improvements in the right-of-way? It's not going to be the same type of, of agreement, or it'll be by and large the same type of agreement, but customized for the situation and issues that you just raised. Who handles snow? What's their obligation? You know, if the stormwater, you know, utility gets passed at town meeting, maybe we attribute some of that cost of the, those equivalent runoff units to the, you know, they agree to pay it on a, as a part of the project or something like that. I mean, there's different things we can do in the license agreement, but if there's no consensus around what is being proposed broadly, then there's not going to be a license agreement either. So those are all details, Richard, that I think will, will work out.
Okay, but what they have been on the table, it's been under consideration.
We actually, I don't know if we talked, I don't recall talking about snow and ice. I mean, to be honest with you, they don't stack it there today.
Right.
And I've, I've never seen them, or if they do, I didn't really observe it.
Well, see, I don't know what current practice is.
It gets pushed into, onto the grass part.
We, we plowed it all winter, and anything over.
But they didn't, but you didn't haul it away. I mean, it got moved over into the, I'll call the grassy part of the tree belt, I presume.
He, yeah, we, he hauled, he hauled one night.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, we'll have to address that.
Okay, okay, Marie.
I can ask my questions now? Thank you. As a member of the select board, I have a few questions, too. And they might go to you, Stephen. When we look at the crossing that they're moving, that sidewalk, are we gonna have to move the actual crossing across the street further up? Will there have to be changes in that crossing?
No, it lines up to the same side.
It does line up. There's no changes.
What's there now is more of a skateboard ramp, and we're replacing that with an ADA ramp and then re-striking the crosswalk.
The pedestrian environment will be significantly improved by what's being proposed.
And do we currently have a crossing guard at that location?
No.
We don't, because as the traffic starts to increase, oh, wait, you're saying, yes, you believe there is a crossing guard? In the morning and the afternoon. Okay.
Oh, going across Bliss?
Going across Bliss, and going across Belclaire.
Right. We have, the people from West Side Town cross over down by Edgewood.
Okay. But there's, I was worried about that Bliss, because if we are start, I see that you are starting to funnel the traffic a little more organized than what we have now, but that always has been a problematic area with the crossing occurring. And with the bagel shop, it's gonna be a lot of morning traffic when the kids are trying to get their bikes and move through there. Now, the bank space, you're saying the bank's no longer there, or, so what are you gonna be putting in the bank space?
We don't know.
Okay, so there could be potential for more retail occurring there?
Additional retail tenant.
Okay.
And we're talking about the traffic that Alex's Bagel Shop would generate. This space, the space he will occupy here is two and a half times bigger than the space he occupies today.
Okay.
So, not only does it give him room for new, larger equipment, but it also gives him room to handle more customers.
Seating in the new space, some seating?
Less than ten, I think.
Okay, but some seating. And talking about review, did this go to the safety committee, or we're waiting to go through planning first?
The traffic committee.
The traffic committee, so it did go to the traffic.
We reviewed it and gave him a set of comments.
Okay. And how are we procedurally now, this is gonna go to planning, and planning's gonna make their recommendation, and then it's gonna come back to us because it's affecting the tree belt?
I mean, the short of it is, it's the town's land, and we need to give them permission to do this by, and like I said, the instrument we use by precedent is the license agreement. I don't, do you have site plan approval for the planning board?
There is no site plan approval, because all of this work is off-site.
And it's by right. The use is by right.
Yes.
And so, they can just go ahead and do it, and you can leave what's there there. We look at this as an opportunity to prove it, I think, and if I may, are you-
Yeah, finished.
I'm gonna thank credit for suggesting the driveway get necked down and move closer to the intersection, because when you go there, it's, as you can see in your pictures, Mark, it's pretty wide open, and the stop bar is counterintuitively far back from the light and the intersection. And so, that is one of the things that creates, I think, some of the confusion and some of the bad situations that you encounter at that intersection, and a less safe pedestrian environment in both directions, across the driveway and across Bliss Road. So, by turning it down and kind of creating a bump out, if you will, and necking it down, it makes, it clarifies the traffic flow, and it has to go that way, because if there's cars coming in at seven-thirty in the morning to bagels, they would be queuing up on Bliss, and that would be an even bigger disaster. And so, we feel like getting the stop bar closer to the light and creating, first of all, repairing the ramps and sidewalks and all that good stuff, and then making it a more sensible layout is a great benefit to that area. I'm, quite frankly, on the fence, no pun intended, about the expansion of the parking all the way up to basically the top of the retaining wall, but when I look across the street at Saint, at the parking that is in the tree belt, both on the base path side of the street and on the St. Mary's side of the street, there isn't a lot there either. And this essentially would look like an extension of those areas. One thing we didn't talk about then, but we've talked about is that it is public parking. We can adopt bylaws regulating times, dates, you know, twenty-minute parking, thirty-minute parking, you know, you, the select board could take those specific actions to regulate the timing of the parking. But, you know, we, you know, parking in that neighborhood generally is a challenge. You know, we still hear from the folks on Green Acre from time to time. I think if we create additional parking, that could in some way relieve some of the on-street parking during the day. I do, I mean, we don't wanna do all this and then have the bagel shop not have the ability to get their customers in and out either, and that's future conversation, but, you know, I think, all things being equal, it's a benefit to the business for sure, which in some ways does benefit the community, but I also think it's a benefit to that specific area from a traffic and parking standpoint.
Well, I just, you know, in terms of meal taxes, do we, does a bagel shop fall on the same sort of tax as other food providers, like-
carry out food, it must be.
So, they must, you know, so, I mean, there are some tax benefits to the community.
They say, yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, I mean, that's good, I think, in terms of, when we look at, you know, what the town is giving up, we're gonna, we've got a little bit of green, and as we talked earlier about conservation area, we have quite a bit of green in here. When we look at Long Meadow Street, I only count five, I could be wrong, there's only five businesses on that whole street, Route Five, and this would be the first one that people would, it's like, the other ones are slow food areas, you know, you look at something like Granalde's, you know, so this would be one. It's not gonna be a fast food area, but people will drive up, grab some bagels, and then move on. And so, I think it offers something that's a lot different than the other businesses on Long Meadow Street, and I think it's a positive move personally. I think it might improve church attendance, but I think that it's, you know, it is a great comfort food, and it's not like people are gonna, generally, you know, Alex's Bagels, people go in for a dozen or two, no, go in for a dozen or half a dozen. It isn't like people just go in for a single bagel or anything like that. And, you know, so I think it might be a good improvement to our business front on Long Meadow Street, you know, so, I mean, I don't have a real problem with it personally.
Richard? No?
So, just to put kind of a topper on this, if, I mean, I guess I would like some kind of either consensus or some kind of vote to either codify the plan as presented or make specific recommended changes, so we can then draft the license agreement, have this as an attachment there, too, and bring it back to the board at a relatively soon meeting.
Marie, can I just make a comment? Is there any, this is the first I saw of what I call a, you know, an elevation plant and look at, is there any way of getting something more than this that looks all the way back to the, you know, an artist's rendering or architect's rendering of what this is gonna look like from the street? I mean, I gotta tell you, 'cause we got, up till now, we've had twenty of these things, which don't tell you at all what it's gonna look like from the street. This is the first thing I've seen that looks at all what it might look like from the street, but I think it's important to see, what does it look like from here back to the building? Because this is literally a parking lot all the way back to the sidewalk, which is right in front of the building, and I think it's important for us, for people to see that.
I think they're talking about actually seeing what the building will look like also.
That doesn't, okay, this, yeah, so this one's a little bit different, yeah, it doesn't, I guess there's not a lot of perspective when you realize how this is wide enough for a couple of cars. I didn't realize that we had this other one. Anyway, Stephen, I mean, I gotta tell you, I've got insufficient information on my side right now to approve this based on what, you know, a bunch of plot plans, but the key to me is, what does it look like from the street and what does it look like? And I appreciate your comments that we have other places in the Route Five that use the, you know, tree belt for parking, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we wanna expand that up and down Route Five, and so I think it's important to see more. I don't know where you wanna go with this, but.
Well, I think, I'd like to hear what planning has to say. When it comes to what you're providing for, is there, you're providing a space for a service that Long Meadow appears to be really interested in, which is retaining Alex's Bagel Shop, too. So, we might be looking at increased parking there, but it's, right now, it's not very pretty looking as it is. It's crumbling, it's falling apart, it's not safe to walk along that, and it's probably one of our most problematic areas, which is how people are coming down at that level and going into that. So, I'd like to see some improvements, and you're saying these are improvements, the town manager appears to. I'm supportive to have it going forward, but a vote, I think, would probably be more appropriate when we have more information at the next meeting. So, unless someone else is saying, put the brakes on it completely right now, we don't even wanna see it go forward.
Sure, Mark, it's not going to the planning board.
Oh, I thought you said you were, they said they were going to make a presentation.
Informal.
Informal. So, their feedback is going to be-
Interesting. Yeah, we would be interested to hear what their feedback is.
So, one of the things we heard when we were talking about Long Meadow Shops was retail space is required by bylaw to have a certain number of parking places per square foot of retail space. You know, and the question is, does that apply here? If, whether the spot, parking places are on private property or public property, and are we better, you know, and if it does, one way or the other, then does the planning board have an input to it? And from my perspective, then, you know, what's the better waiver? To waive the town's tree belt to be paved over, or waive the requirement for a certain number of parking spaces, or are we just saying it's not that you must have the number of parking spaces, that you like those additional parking spaces and are willing to spend this amount of money to get the additional parking spaces, but require town property to do that? And if, and maybe, so maybe it's a different kind of approach as opposed to trading off a required parking versus a waiver on the amount of parking?
I, I'm surprised at that, too, but I, you know, it's, I don't think they're required for site plan review. You know, Tommy made the comment, there's five commercial buildings, I mean, it's more than five businesses, but there's five kind of commercial centers on Long Meadow Street.
Yeah.
I think virtually all of them have parking in the tree belt, including this one currently. So, I think, Mark, I, when I hear your comments, it sounds like going from nothing to all of this parking, and I think what, the reason, which I would've been completely, probably wouldn't even gotten this far if that was what they're proposing. To me, there's already parking there today. How do we take what's there that doesn't work very well in a lot of ways, make it better on their dime, and give a chance to have some active businesses there? And so, that's the approach we took, you know, like I said, if it was, if there was nothing, it would be a hard sell for me, but since there's already something there, I don't look at this as that dramatic of a change. But I do agree with you 100% in that an elevation-
See what we can do?
Yeah, would be something that would help folks, you know, put their, you know, look at, not in their mind's eye, but in an actual perspective, so they know what they're getting, because when you're sitting in a car, I say, I look, now that I, since we've been talking about this, I drive by, it'll be a very significant change when you're sitting at that traffic light on Long Meadow Street, and I think we need to get a sense of what that's gonna look like.
Marie, is it, I understand what the planning's in it, but I'd still like to hear what they have to think about it, if they'll have their questions. If possible, we could have those, the chair, come to our next meeting? One of your meetings, planning-
I'm sorry, sir, but I'd be hurt at some point after the board has heard, I represent Alex's Bagel Shop, and I might be able to enhance some of the information which has been given over to the board here tonight, which I think might answer some questions, but again, whenever the board is available.
Yeah, if you wanted, should we take another microphone at the end, if you wanted to add something to it?
You can just pull the chair up.
Just pull the chair up to the front.
My name is Philip Larro. I live at 165 Converse Street in Laurel, Unit Five. I've met at Pinewood Hills about thirty-five years before that.
Oh, why don't you sit down, 'cause even though it doesn't, the television won't be able to record you if they don't hear you.
My name is Philip Larro. I live at 165 Converse Street, Unit Five, Converse and Laurel. I've lived prior, all over thirty years at Pinewood Hills. I've been a resident here for quite a few years, with my family and my children, my grandchildren, and birth and heir, and a vigilant patron of Alex's Bagels for all over forty years, every day. And before that, the last remaining places, the hardware store, and in particular, the barber shop, hardest thing was to find a new barber shop. Big Y had to make a hard business decision, and this is going on two years, and we finally got the last, the last extension, and he has to be added there June 30th. I mean, it's, and he's gonna be paying two and a half times what he's paying right now. His five children are either in college or graduated college. They work together as a family. He worked for the Grant family, which had a delicatessen in front of the Big Y. They were, I secured that because I had Chippy split his face up and put a bagel shop up. Alex, who was a baker there for twenty-one years, bought it approximately ten years ago, and he runs it very, very successful. So, and unsolicited, we had two women come into the shop, and they solicited twenty-five-hundred signatures, asking that that bagel shop stay at Big Y. He put a lot of pressure on, a lot of heat, and Big Y, again, is strictly business, and I understand that very well. What happens, I'm a trial lawyer, I'm not a business lawyer, but I've been around the block, and I understand that decisions have to be made. Mr. Cochino here from Colvest has, really came forward. We had a look at, we've looked at twenty places, all over the place, and in more than half, the, in particular at the, in the mall section, across the street, what they've done with Alex is they've asserted their lease rights, that they could not compete with someone who had baked goods, and that's three of, three places pulled that on him, on Alex, and they wouldn't allow him to rent place, space on either side. And I'm going from the two main economic areas here that sell food, both sides of where Alex is. So, he got knocked out at at least four different spots. Here's a man who's putting his entire life savings, his life has been there. It's a very popular, people know, establishment. Mr. Colvest again stepped forward and rented this, what, a key. We signed the lease, and again, he has to be added there June 30th. So, it's tremendous pressure. And again, they gave two extensions, so I'm not, there's no going back and asking again for anything. Red starts running it July 1st. What I'm saying to the board is, you know, I'm looking to retain a, really a tradition that came into this town a long time ago, from someone who opened up an ethnic delicatessen there, which was very, very popular. And this is, again, the Grant family. They had to get, they had the safe situation, and a barber decided to give him half the place, and his business quadrupled. Nobody knew the barber was there on the side of the building. There were lines all the way down from the bagel shop to the hardware store, four or five days. I don't wanna make a drama out of this, but it is business involved here, and Colvest was one of the few people who stepped forward and said, "We will make the necessary situation available, parking-wise." Now, what does he draw? You go in the morning, there was young women with their children, young men with their children. He drive, he draws, he has a very large elderly clientele. They're there, they come in, they go out. I've been up and down that spot, and we got knocked out of a place across the street, by the way, too, for the same purpose. It's a bread product, and somebody didn't want a bread product to compete with that bread product, or it wasn't anything comparable to what he does. So, he's a baker, really, that's what he does. So, I'm looking to keep a Grant legacy going by a Russian immigrant who was here. He's a pastor, by the way, on Sundays at the Russian Orthodox Church. I wanna keep, I wanna keep something that was here for years and years. I wanna keep these twenty-five-hundred people, it was all close to three thousand people, and they stopped, what they were- they were, they couldn't move. Big Y really couldn't move on it. They didn't care if there was going to be 10,000 signatures. Again, business is business. I want to keep him going, going. He needs to, he needs the parking. There's no ifs, buts, or maybes about it. If it's done right, it's done correctly, and Colvest has a reputation of doing things the right way. And I know they will do things that this board wants, or any department of this town wants done, they will do, to accommodate Alex. They have a good relationship, a working relationship, and I'm, I'm confident that at the end, the town itself will have, will have something besides the pretty bland spots in town that you go in. I think it'll be somewhat of a novelty place where somebody can come in and go, and I think children will gravitate to it. I think people from St. Mary's will, will come, people from the gas station, there's a place finally to stop to get a cup of coffee. I mean, if you go from Enfield to the town line, there's nothing.
Thank you so much. I think you've, you put a person, you put personality in that, we made us realize that there's people involved here, there's a business, and not just plans, so.
But I think, I think it's important, though, that, that I comment on this, because I, I certainly appreciate that it's a family business. I appreciate it's a business in town. You know, I, I just think it's, it's unusual for somebody to sign a lease based on assuming town property for private use. And if that's what was done.
No, I don't think, I don't think he was stating that at all.
Well, that's what I thought I heard, that you need the, the parking, and you've got to have the park, but we're talking about public land. This is public land that we're going to pave over for.
We're talking about expansion.
But it's a grassy slope, Marie, that's getting paved over. And the characterization that if you're not for, for a, a personal.
No.
Family business, you've got to, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't come across that way, because this, in fact, for me, is a decision based on, does the town want to continue to let businesses pave over our town green, which is one of the, you know, or our town wide tree belt on Route 5, which is one of the highlights of the town of Long Meadow? Or do we not? It's that simple.
And I'm sure we'll hear from people this next week.
And I hope, I hope we do hear from people, and, and, you know, I'm willing to be outvoted, but I think we need to understand that this shouldn't be just conceived, conceived of, well, the business wants it, and therefore we need to do it.
I think that's why we're going to wait to hear from planning. We heard from the traffic committee, and we will be voting on the 15th. So I hope that's not too much of a delay, but we still want a little more information. If we could get those pictures, renditions, that would be really helpful to us, too. Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for, and for the business owners that came. Thank you very much. Did you want to have anything you wanted to say, or?
We're not in opposition to it.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. Short and sweet. Thanks.
Very interested party, that's all.
Okay.
I can take up a board.
Oh, you would like to? Okay. Mm-hmm. And just introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Alexander Belashov. I own this, one bagel shop. I live in Ladla, on 42 Charles Street. I lived like 30 years, almost, in the United States. And my concern about parking, it's the most important for me, be safety for the people, especially young people when they come in. And when they have like parallel parking, it's extremely hard, extremely hard parking, especially young moms, they have to sit, and it's, it's just hard, and not safety, not safety at all. I've been in New York many times, they always live in age and risk dangers all the time. And I don't want to see this. And my concern is make for public more safety. Like older people, you know, we're not getting young.
Yes, not all of us are good at parallel parking.
We need like an easy access. It's going to be much easier for older people, and young moms especially, just easy access to the bagel shop, other business, and no dangers at all. And like guys say, most importantly, this parking is not really look good. It's not really good. It's old, it's not, not antique. It's just old, and it needs something replacement. But for the city, it's going to be improved. And some people is going to give some money, improve it, the city, of course, we have to work together, make improvement nice. But it should be more safety and more, more space, not just, just to look nice, but it should be fitted in, this people can fit it in.
Safety first.
Everybody be happy.
We appreciate that input. Thank you very much for coming in. And thank you for coming. If those renditions could get to us the Thursday before our meeting, at least, because we usually have a packet that goes out Thursday and Friday before, and that way, if anyone on the board has further questions, they could get to you before the meeting.
What's the next meeting?
Will be the 15th, I believe.
So.
Are you going to try to bring the chair of planning in?
Yes, I will definitely ask the chair of planning to come in. Whoever they want to send over to us to bring us in, yeah. That'd be great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Moving along to, we'll go back to our order approval of minutes for April 18th.
Move we approve the minutes, April 18th, 2017.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm going to ask the board, if we could take the water rates, I came up with an idea. I attended the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Water Management, which was fascinating roundtable today. And I think there's so much we need to discuss in regards to water and sewer. We still have to decide on our sewer rates. Do you mind if we push that down and have an actual meeting, just Water Sewer Commission, within, on the 15th? Is everyone okay with moving that down?
Paul, is there going to be a problem with, if we wait two weeks to set the water rate? Since we already have one that's probably not going to stand, but.
I'm just thinking, from the appropriations standpoint, you know, that's the annual town meeting, if you were going to do something. But I don't think that anything to do with the rates. No, you could probably still set the rate sometime there.
Doesn't change the budget, does it?
We have to appropriate money for the city of Springfield. They're, they're raising it by $250,000. We need to appropriate that money.
Can you, so, so.
Oh, yeah, why don't you come up here?
So we're going to amend the budget on town floor to?
That would be a question I have for you folks. It's going to have to be amended at a town meeting.
Oh, it is.
So whether it's, whether it's the annual town meeting, or whether it's the fall town meeting, you need to appropriate that money to pay the city of Springfield.
And you can't do that unless we have a revenue source to pay for that appropriation.
You're talking about the enterprise fund, reserve?
Either that or rates. So it's going to have to come from one source or another, but the money has to be appropriated.
It has to be appropriated unless we do the rates.
It has to be appropriated regardless, whether it's coming from rates or whether it's coming out of our reserves. It has to be appropriated in order to have that money available to pay the city of Springfield.
So what were your recommendations on how we're going to do that?
My recommendation would have been to basically cut that rate increase in half, to change the rates from 308 to roughly $3.22. Have the other half, you know, 120,000 or so be taken out of, out of reserves. Because in FY '19, the, the water budget for the city of Springfield falls by roughly that 120,000 dollars. And it kind of, we are having a good year this fiscal year. We're, at this point in time, over $400,000 over budget from the revenue. So it's kind of a blend. And when you take the wa, increase in the water rates that I'm mentioning, plus the sewer rates that are already voted, you have to remember, you folks already did set these rates back in February. That when you take the combination of those, it's only a little over a 2% increase. So it's not an extraordinary amount of, from a percentage standpoint of money, as opposed to raising the full amount, which would, you know, go up like 3. some percent.
Well, you said we're 400 over. Should we be taking more than 120 out? Why did you pick 120?
I basically cut it in half.
But you're saying this has to be done before town meeting?
I think it has to be done at a town meeting. It can be done in the fall.
Oh, it can be.
But, but if we did it tonight, then we could amend the number at the town meeting on floor and have it done now.
So we better stick to this meeting?
Yeah, sounds like it.
So let's keep it on the agenda, and.
Paul's got the answer.
Well, Paul's, you're just coming up with an idea, just come up with 50/50. Now, the question is, how do we feel about it 50/50, when you're saying we're 400 plus? Maybe we should pull more out of our, our reserves, if we've really built up our reserves.
Well, I just want to add one thing about taking out of reserves. You are using a substantial amount of reserve this fiscal year. This fiscal year, you're using almost 432 drawing out, so basically, you're basically just putting the money back in, but you will still meet your $500,000 minimum requirement, when all this is said and done, by doing the approach that I kind of just proposed.
But if we went more than 120, we would be dipping below the 500.
You could potentially be dipping below. It all would depend on how much of the expenditure side, the appropriations side, turnbacks came back. I'm estimating about $75,000 of the budget will be turned back. You know, it will depend on that. But, you know, as of today, you're $419,000 over on the revenue side. And, you know, the estimate that I put down in the literature that was sent, I used an estimate of 400,000. The estimate for the end of fiscal year for the sewer reserve, with the $400,000, was So again.
So there's your 120,000 out.
If you cut it in half, you're right at your $500,000 mark.
So what do people feel about his proposal?
I think there's value in getting this thing financially wrapped up at the town meeting, as opposed to waiting until the, at the May town meeting, as opposed to waiting until the, the fall town meeting. And I don't think the numbers are going to change, Marie, to tell you the truth. I can't imagine that between now and, you know, and a few weeks from now, we're going to find something that says, no, we don't want to go, you know, raise, raise the, the rate above what we had already said. The question is, how much do we want to pull out of, do we want to pull anything out of reserves? And if so, is 120,000 the right amount? I mean, I, historically, we've said that, that 500,000 is our target for our water reserves, and if we're actually going to be at 635, then pulling out 120,000 isn't, is in line with what we said? I think it makes a lot of sense.
Or should we pull out a little more? How much is, or people's rate's going to go up? I mean, how much? The average household is going to hit.
They're $3, they're, you know, the board, again, set the rate at 308 back in February. They would go from 308 to 322. That rate, just on the water, would be a 4.5% increase. But again, if you combine, you dropped the sewer rate 2 cents. So I'm looking at it, when you do a combined amount, which would affect most people, those that don't go over the 220 units, in total, would be $5.60 that was voted back in February to 572. That's a 2.1% increase, if you go to the $3.22 that's on the water. Because the sewer rate is set at 250. That was, again, that was done back in, in February.
Well, I, you know, I think you have a well-thought-out proposal. It makes sense, number-wise. And I was planning on voting on this, because it does make sense to have it all in order for the town warrant.
What do you think, Richard?
I'm neutral. Let's get, let's get down to business.
Just do it?
Yeah, let's just do it.
Well, do you think we should be pulling a little bit more out of reserves to soften the hit? Or is it not going to make that much of a difference if you go up another 50, 60?
For every penny that you change, it's about $8,000. So if you want to pull, you know, the change of 3 cents, it's, you know, $25,000 roughly. So maybe it's.
So, Marie, if I could, so Paul, you remember a couple of years ago, we put up on here a chart of, and we were going to try to even it out over a few years? You said next year, they're saying it's going to go down. Do you, you know, what, what's that number? And so I guess the question is, how much would it go up next year?
Well, the amount that they have proposed for the town now, the revised amount is $1,112,000 for FY '18. For FY '19, that proposal goes down just below a million. So it drops 100, roughly 112,000 dollars next year. The year after that, it remains relatively stable at 995,000, again, just under a million. FY '21, it goes over a million to 1,033,000, not a large increase. And then in FY '22, it is projected to go 1,088,000, not a large increase. So you have a period of four years that it remains relatively stable. However, in the year 2023, they have almost a 30% increase. It goes to 1.332. So, you know, if you bump it now, you could, you know, work on that FY '23 increase over a period of four years. But it's jumping $300,000 from FY '22 to '23. And, you know, all this could change, you know, overnight, almost. But those are the numbers as we, as we see them today.
Was there a motion on the floor?
Well, you know, the one thing, Marie, we've said this many times, we have policies in, and then we turn around and violate them. I guess I'm opposed to taking reserve funds all the time. I mean, if we want them there, let's leave them. I turn to the rate, the rate buyer, or the rate people, understand what's happening. It's nothing that we're doing. It's being forced upon us, and if we're going to value our policies.
Can I just respond, Richard? I agree with you that they're policies, but I think the, the balance in our water reserve fund is, is as much the reflection of happenstance. And by that, I mean what the weather is like, dry, wet, whether people water or not, because we can't predict in advance how much they're going to use. And I think the policy that we have is this $500,000 of, of reserve. And when we're over $500,000, to some degree, it means we overcharge because we use too small a denominator. In other words, we thought we were going to only use, I think the number is 860,000 units of water, and maybe they're 890,000. So the argument would, would be, you know, gee, if we, you know, we estimated wrong, I won't say we overcharged people, because, but we estimated usage wrong last year. We compensate for it this year by, we'll just pull a little of that money you paid last year out to soften the blow. So I, I agree with you, there, we have policies, but, but the reserves are just, especially the water reserve is kind of a funny, a funny amount. And so I think that's, I don't have the problem you appear to in pulling money out of the, the water retained earnings fund for that reason. I don't know, Paul, if you.
Well, again, I think as long as you maintain your minimum, I think that would be a big argument for, for allowing to do it. I don't have the policy in front of me, did not check it, but I imagine the uses are for capital needs and for stabilization of rates.
Yeah, and I don't know if that was in there or not, either.
Yeah, I, again, I did not check. It would make sense if it was.
If it is in there, then it's totally legitimate, and that changes it, then the policy was to allow that.
Well, then, if you're going to challenge me, I'm going to look it up.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was unanticipated capital improvements, is I thought why we had the reserve. But if it's for a rate change, of course, we could, we could hold a special meeting at any time and adjust rates.
You could adjust rates, but again, town meeting still has to vote at this at some point in time.
I mean, we can have special town meeting. I mean, if we had to.
Yeah, no, and certainly you, you could vote the rates down and have the appropriation done in the fall, too. The appropriation just needs to be in place by the time we set the tax rate, which, well, you know, remember.
We've had several special town meetings the past year, so.
We may have more in the future, it's just the way the business is starting to go.
Was there a motion on the floor to accept Paul's plan?
I'll certainly make that motion. I'm just, I'm going to, I'm pulling up, though, just to see, just because I'm curious.
Well, I still want to have the water and sewer meeting on the 15th, where we, we take a section of the meeting and really work on that, and some of the issues. Because I would like to see what capital improvements water, Springfield Water is putting together that have pushed this rates up.
There's a list of capital expenditures in the.
So.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, Lars made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
I'll move that we set the water rate at $3.22 for fiscal year 2018, and utilize $125,000 from the water reserve fund in order to balance the water department budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I just, yeah, our water pol, reserve policy is allowed uses of the funds. One, operations, repairs, maintenance of the potable and firefighting water distribution system. Two, outright purchase of individual capital equipment necessary. Three, bonded indebtedness for maintenance and repair of the water distribution system. Not allowed uses of the funds. Repair, maintenance, capital, or other expenditures that are unrelated to the potable and fire water distribution system. Oh, and here's, oh, allowed uses of reserves, outright purchase of capital equipment, bonding, off-season, offset seasonal variability of rates, unexpected revenue deficiencies, unforeseen and emergency equipment repairs.
Okay, it's covered.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Not now.
Are we using reserves?
No. Cut it in half.
We're following his plan.
Good plan.
I missed the first one, sorry.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for checking the policy, Mark.
We'll rewrite the motions, I'll work with them on doing that, and I'd also like to give you folks the GFOA budget.
Award winning.
Hasn't won an award yet for this year.
It's based on an award winning.
Thank you.
By the pound.
Thank you, Paul.
You missed it, the CFO recommended it be done before town meeting, so that.
We had talked about it, I didn't know what he'd said.
Okay, all right, and so the next item actually talks about changes at town meeting also, and that's the new adult center, the, ends up that the, one of the few articles that the finance committee refused to approve was the design money for the new adult center, and the adult building committee went to speak to them to understand what their concerns were, and my understanding, I was there at the original vote, was they felt that there was confusion about what was being built, were they talking about joint building with Parks and Rec, or was this going to be just an adult center, they felt that there was no consensus of feeling on what was going forward, and they were concerned about the amount of money, and the adult building committee went and spoke to them, and they said, if you can find a consensus and come forward showing consensus, and reconsider your numbers, we will reconsider our decision, so the adult building committee has sat down and talked to the town manager, and they discussed among themselves what they were willing to do, and they said, we really aren't confused of what we want, so they've put together a motion to amend the article on the floor, which would be emphasizing that they're looking at the Greenwood Park and a freestanding adult center, then they looked at the number, and they said, well, we could bring maybe the number down fifty thousand, because they already had fifty thousand dollars of design money so far that they worked out, and I know it's a formula that architects work on, and so they were going to go back to the finance committee to see if they could get approval with the amendment, and I felt that the select board should understand what is going on with the finance committee, and what possibly could happen on the floor. And wanted to know if you had any questions about it, because there's nothing we vote on, I just wanted you to know where the concerns are.
Yeah, and when will we meet with the finance?
I think the finance committee said that they would have a meeting sometime between now and town meeting, if they decided to change their position, because right now, it could be very damaging to the discussion on town floor, if you have a finance committee who says they don't approve the appropriation of the money.
Right, and so what this would mean then is that if, the only thing would change, so we would, do we have to open the warrant, I mean, are we just going to change the numbers?
It would be, no, it would not be anything we would do, it would be an amendment, and the, the town meeting would have to vote on the amendment, because it would.
Because it's already printed.
Because it's already been printed, yeah, and the, whenever there is an amendment, it has to be sent to the town moderator in writing, and I recommended that they send it ahead of time before, so that the town moderator understands there might be a change on the floor, now, my concern is, you're talking about decreasing the design money at a time where design money actually might be a little higher, because we're talking about zero energy building, or moving towards that, you're never going to get to a pure zero energy building, and that does require more design money than the regular building, but maybe the adult building committee said, well, they would look for grants, and they already have two lines of grants they could look at to try to, you know, supplement their design money, but right now, they felt that they, it was really important to work with the finance committee.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Marie, I have a couple of comments, the first one is, I guess I'm a little bit disappointed that, that the building committee, which is a committee of the select board, went to the finance committee without us knowing about it and endorsing it, pretty much independently, it sounds like, that, that, I think that's a bad precedent to set for the, for this committee that's not an independent committee, but is one of our subcommittees, but secondarily, you know, I, I can't imagine how the finance committee can vote on an amendment that hasn't been proposed yet, you know, you know, how do you go before, and that's for the finance committee to decide, but if they've said, come to us with your amendment, and we'll take a vote on it, there's something that's not kosher relative to the charter, where the charter requires the finance committee to act and vote on proposed warrant articles, and not potential amendments, the third issue I have, and this is something for our town moderator to find out, is obviously, we don't know what the amendment is, but it sounds like the amendment's going to be substantially different from the warrant article, and at what point does the amendment sufficiently different, or substantially different enough, so that it no longer reflects the intent of what people came to the town meeting to vote on, and, and I don't know where that comes up, but my understanding is, somebody's going to stand up and object to it, that's what I was told, that, that, that the amendment isn't going to be substantially same, or will be substantially different, and therefore should be ruled out of order, that's for the town moderator to have to decide at, at that time, and I'd suggest, Rebecca, that you have some legal backing, or if you need it, or if you don't, don't have it, but be prepared that somebody will object to the amendment under the guise that it's substantially different from what's printed, so with all that being said, you know, I, I understand the issue, Marie, but I think it's, it's, it's the wrong thing at the wrong time, and asking for a finance committee to do something, I don't think they're authorized to do under the charter.
Well, it's interesting.
They can do anything they want to, but, you know, it's like me asking, going in and asking them, well, if I make an amendment to the, to, to the budget of a certain amount, will, will they, will they, you know, vote on that in advance, well, it's, it's a, it's a potential amendment, it's not an actual warrant article.
Well, I think that the question is about the, the finance committee, is even when they were looking at the various warrant articles, they were asking for, you know, DPW, they were asking for these groups to come in front of them to justify the amendments, too, so when you say, why are they going and speaking to them, well, that's sort of become, and I'm not sure if it's different, that's become part of the process, it appears, this year, if not previous years, where everyone has to go in front of them in order to, to be able to get the approval stamp for their, their warrant articles, now, so to say they shouldn't go in front of them, I, I don't think you could say that, because unfortunately, that's become the process of procedure these days.
Yeah, I think they, they can go before anybody they want, but like Mark said, they can't vote on something that's not been introduced.
Yes.
And the amendment to this will have to be introduced on the town floor.
Exactly, there could be no change ahead of time.
Certainly lobby them, but, I mean, they can't come out and say, the finance can't come out and make any statement on this until we're on the town floor.
Well, because the amend might not pass.
Right.
In other words, they cannot, they can't vote on an amendment that hasn't passed on town floor.
Am I right, this latest proposal now is that this is only for the adult center?
That it's, that is a, yes, for the adult center, and not to include the Parks and Recs.
A freestanding building.
Okay.
And one of the reasons.
I mean, all buildings are freestanding, but a freestanding building only housing the functions of the adult center.
Right, you know, I hate to say it, but this, this whole planning process is sort of like a fish being brought out of the water, and it's jumping around, and you can't quite get a handle on it, because this thing is, it's starting to confuse me, it keeps changing every two weeks, and I don't blame anybody, I know everybody's up against it, I understand it, but still, this thing is going up and down the ladder, sooner or later, we've got to settle and settle on where we're going to go before the public, we expect them to support us, and I do understand the, the problem with this, I fully understand it.
And that's why we're in the middle of the planning process, and the finance committee is insisting that we make some steps, because, before even town meeting, before we even get the design money, so I'm frustrated by the position of the finance committee, but I have no control, because they're not our board, they're advisory to.
Well, I don't think, I don't think.
Town meeting, that's it.
I don't think finance should drive design decisions, to start with, they're, they can make their opinions on however they want, but, you know, if you have, you have a building committee that's coming forth and selling a project, I mean, that's their duty, I don't know where you get into a negotiation between finance and the design process, because finance has nothing to do with the design process, they're dealing with the, the dollar amounts and the, the legalities of those dollar amounts, like, you know, I hate to see us get more and more confused, and I, and it seems like that's what's happening, like, we got, we got too many shepherds trying to drive one project, and, and that should not be how the, how the planning process goes, we should have one shepherd driving this project.
Marie, if I may, I think, if I can give my two cents on this, whatever it's worth, I, to some extent, I think, in terms of the law, like lobbying for a project, I don't know that I agree with that, because I think, to Mark's point, it is a, like a subcommittee of the select board, and the select board didn't make the design decision for a freestanding, single function, or single purpose building, now, to be honest with you, it's a good recommendation to, by the finance committee, to go ask town meeting if that's what they want, I mean, I look at moments like this as good opportunities to get feedback from town meeting to give us direction, we didn't, you know, like, save Will Swamp Fields, or save our parks, or all these other votes that weren't kind of anticipated or planned for by the select board, we learned a lot about these projects, and those votes helped us either keep going or change directions based on the feedback we got from the town, and I look at this as another opportunity to get meaningful, specific feedback from the community of, about what they're willing to explore as an option for this project, how it got there, you know, as, I think as Marie said, I, I shudder when she says, these are the new policies and procedures, because they're not, it's just how people are going about it now, but it is how people are going about it now, and so I think, you know, and I think that, Mark, your comment about, is it even going to be an amendment that'll be found in order is, is a threshold criteria for all of this, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I agree, I think the process of how this kind of side deal, if you will, is being proffered is a little different, but if the outcome is, we get a specific, a specific vote or decision, or a feed, a feedback item from town meeting that meaningfully instructs us on how we proceed on the project, that's an okay, that, that's a needed outcome of that non-traditional process.
Well, and I, but I think everybody has a job here, and I said, I really believe that, and sometimes, sometimes the tail can get the wagon the dog, and I sense there's some tails wagging dogs, and that's what I don't like, I mean, we've been told four different design scenarios for one project, and it's about time that we settled, this select board has a right to know what is being proposed, we want to support it, but what, what are we going to do, A, B, C, or D, you know, we support stuff, too, but we've got to settle, we can't keep changing every two weeks, I think it, to me, it shows a flaw in our system, Stephen, not a, not a strength.
Well, I think it shows the project's still moving along, like, when you, we came in, and we, the master plan was shown to you, you were not happy with it, and you said, why did we all of a sudden change directions, the, the adult building committee came and gave their opinion on the master plan, and everyone seemed to really like that idea, this is moving along in that direction, I don't think that it's, it's, we're going in five different directions, I think we're still moving forward on the project.
Is this not reversed directions in the last two weeks?
No.
Okay, the last four, the last presentation that was made to this board was a joint facility.
Right, I wouldn't say it's reversed directions, Richard, what I would say is that a different type of scenario was proposed, a thinking outside the box.
But by whom and to whom?
By the town, by my, by me, and, but, and the department heads, the Parks and Rec Department, and the Council on Aging, which was what the select, we wanted to see, select board said, hey, town manager, give us your idea, so we did, we understood immediately that there were concerns and challenges associated with the master plan, nevertheless, I still support moving forward, and I support, hopefully, town meeting giving us this appropriation, because it's like the DPW, it's like any project, we're still at the phase where we're looking, we're looking through iterations and different options, it's a complicated project, it's not complicated to build a senior center, it really isn't.
No.
What's complicated is, what do you do with what's left behind, and what is the long-term cost of town, all these other things, but these are things that have been part of the discussion, adult center building committee as well, I mean, I think we're all trying to get to the point where we're looking at, and the other thing is, I mentioned before, the very notion of looking at Greenwood Park holistically was a result of last fall's town meeting, so that, that was relatively new information, that's not something that has been a part of this discussion until, you know, six months ago, all that said, I don't, I, I think we are moving forward in accordance with how these master planning projects go, and if hopefully, if and when the appropriation gets approved, we're going to go and take the six or seven iterations we've had over the years of this, put them on a table, and pick out things that we like of each of them, and try and come up with a new plan that we can present to the board, and then eventually, hopefully, to town meeting, of what we think the right idea is.
But, Richard, am I paraphrasing you correctly if I say, where did the select board lose control of their process?
Right.
Because since it last left here, we heard a presentation by the building committee, and then we're hearing, and the building committee went and is proposing on, is developing amendment, that they went and talked to the finance committee about, and they're going to propose on, on town meeting floor parenthetically, and you'll hear about it at town meeting floor.
No, I told you what they were talking about, they have not made any presentations to finance committee yet.
Is, is there a written version of this amendment?
Yes, they're, they're working on a written version, Mary Beth is here, if you would like to speak to.
So they're working on it?
Yes.
But, so it's not there yet?
It's not there yet, that's why it's being presented, and I'm telling you what, what's happening, and, you know, we haven't lost control of it, everything that we have been saying has been heard by the adult building committee, and they're trying to move over the fact that you now have a finance committee who is stepping into the project, and as Stephen said, is trying to get involved in the design aspects.
But, but they don't have the right to do that, their right is to say, we recommend or don't recommend this expenditure, period, you know, and I understand what they want to do, and that's all well and good, but the fact is, their, their charter authority is limited to we recommend or don't recommend it, I guess the question is, you know, I mean, any person on town meeting floor can stand up and offer an amendment in writing, and if it gets seconded to any article, warrant article, so it's not like the select board needs to know what amendments are being proposed, but I would think that if it's a committee of the select board that's developing and proposing this amendment, it, the select board ought to, ought to see it, or know about it.
I'll be glad to.
If it's being done under the guise of, we're doing it as the committee, as opposed to, I'm doing it as.
I gave you the rough.
As Sally Citizen, and I'm just going to stand up and do it.
I gave you the two main points of it, and if you want the actual written thing, it will be sent to you immediately, yes.
But, but the question is, is it being stood up and said, the amendment, this amendment's being proposed by Sally Citizen, or, or John Q. Public, or is this, is this amendment being proposed by the, a, a subcommittee of the select board, because I think that has weight in, in the, in town meeting, and if it's being proposed by a subcommittee of the select board, one would think that the select board ought to say, yeah, that's something we support, or not, and right now, we won't know until it goes in front of town hall, we certainly aren't going to have.
I just told you with the two parts for you, do you want the actual written one, the actual, written amendment?
I think the select board ought to say, yes, this is an amendment, we want to go forward from, as the guise of a committee of our, of the select board, because, because right now, without that vote, it's got to go up there as John Q. Public is proposing this amendment.
Okay, so, gee, the, the two parts of the amendment is asking for two hundred thousand rather than two fifty, and the other is to say, a freestanding building dedicated to adult services.
Now, as I look at this warrant article, it really parallels what you're saying, it's just going to decrease the money, but this really does say that, you know, they're looking to continue to build an adult center, you know, including renovation, well, this also says including renovation of the existing facility, so I guess that would be something that would be scratched, right?
Well, I, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, no, okay, so there'd be some minor changes, but, but this doesn't mention anything about an all-purpose building, or.
See, and I agree with you, Tom, I, I think that, that what Marie said is, is essentially what we've got written here, but two hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, and, and because it's money appropriated to the town, at some point, we say, and oh, by the way, town manager, it's, you know, we heard what people want to do, and as a select board, we want to direct it to only a, I don't know that it needs an amendment, to tell you the truth, other than two hundred thousand dollars, and I can't imagine anybody's going to turn that down.
Well, the other is that the building is dedicated to senior services, people are afraid that that's, that we're, that they're going to be building something that's for Parks and Rec and the adult building services.
So if that passes, that means that we can't have a. So if that passes, that means that we can't have a, a storage closet in there for Parks and Recs for their summer program. Oh, no! I, I, I'd hold you to it, because that's what dedicated means. And that's the, the, you know, be careful what you ask for, Marie, because you may get declined based on that dedicated word.
What are the exact words? Do you have that?
I don't have the exact words.
You don't have the exact words?
Again, you know, I'm not looking for, for daycare, and I've made that pretty clear, for daycare, after-care, school program, but to say that we have summer camps there, and it's appropriate for them to have storage facilities or some, that, that's all of a sudden not dedicated to the adult center. And now there's a potential problem. And I think people need to understand that. And, and that means that you can't, you can't, you can't put a DPW maintenance shop in there or something, because it's not dedicated to adults. I don't know what we might want to do, but it's, it ought to be a town building, and if we get the message that's predominantly for the adult center.
I don't understand where you're getting this from, because when I look at Article 31, none of this is in there, what you're talking about.
It's the amendment that she's, she's saying that's going to be proposed, is to be, that's why I, I think what we've got is perfectly...
What it comes down to is that the Finance Committee says they don't want to put $250,000 towards the master plan. That's what it comes down to. And they said, "And we don't feel people want the master plan, so we don't trust unless there's something to change in there that shows that it's going to be only for the adult center." Now, when it comes down to it, whether we have a gym in that building or not, as you said, youth will sometimes be using it. If there's a dance studio in there, maybe sometimes a dance class will be in there for youth. But the Finance Committee, and maybe we're twisting around too many corners to make the Finance Committee happy, the Finance Committee says they want this to be for the adult center, not for the master plan.
Yeah, I don't know where to...
So I don't know, I don't know where to go with it. That's the problem. Where do you go with this? I don't want this to become...
My personal opinion is, you know, we've had plenty of other Warren articles that aren't endorsed by the, recommended by the Finance Committee, and they pass anyway because we have an overwhelming number of people in town saying, "Yes, I want to put up an adult center building." And especially if you say, "Look, we've rethought this, and we, we only need $250,000, we need $200,000." I think that's a compelling argument with the Warren article we have, and, and why are we going to go through all these gyrations when, you know, you're right. Because, A, there's, and, and oh, by the way, you, you know, the, the, I, I get back to, the Finance Committee can't vote on an amendment, on a, well, don't worry, I'm going to, if I put up this amendment, can I say the Finance Committee supports it? Because the Finance Committee can't, that's not in their chart. It's not their authority to vote on a potential amendment. So you're chasing something you can't catch anyway with, with a proposed amendment. I, you know, I, Tom, I agree with you. What we got here covers the bill.
What, do you think we should just add the line, "Not the master plan"? I mean, how do we?
I mean...
Where do we go with that?
And oh, by the way, and we're not going, and we're not going to put a DPW facility there?
I've got an idea.
How do you put down what you're not going to put?
I'll take the board.
You're going to burn it?
And I'll light it on fire at the front of Town Meeting. Because honestly, and I, I, Mary Beth, I'm sorry, that is all this is about, okay?
It is, that's all this is about.
That is all this is about, and we're, we're kind of, we're doing some gymnastics here. The, the article was drafted specifically open-ended.
Yeah.
Specifically for the reason of, we didn't want to get tied to one idea going forward. And when we talked about the Warren article during the Select, during the meeting on the warrant, I specifically said, we want, that's why I had newer renovated? Why? To, to maintain all options open on the table. I think we're getting a sense of the options we like, but you still, when you're at this phase of the process, want to keep all options open. And the dislike for the master plan was so strong that they think that somehow, I guess me, I'm going to surreptitiously take the $250,000 and further my plan for total park domination at Greenwood. But, and I get that. And the thing is, I, I can say it till I'm blue in the face, "Hey, got it. Master plan's off the table. We'll take it." And like I said, the next, the next stage of this, if we get the money, is, take all the ideas, put them on the table, bring stakeholders together, have a design charrette, not start from scratch, per se, but build off of all of the stuff that's already out there, the work of the committees, everybody. A bunch of Legos will be on the table, try and snap them together into something we like. But the Legos are already there. I don't know how, I, I personally, this is my own personal opinion, not my Town Manager opinion, I personally think that to highlight attention on all this stuff and start messing with this thing on Town Meeting floor is risky when there's nothing in here that binds anybody to that master plan anyway. And oh, by the way, you're getting, cut yourself by $50,000 bucks that would be useful during the process.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know how to say to the community, I mean, I'm happy to stand up and say that in front of Town Meeting, "Hey, this isn't for the master plan," you know...
There's nothing here that says master plan.
I, I know, I don't...
All we have to do is say, we reduced the price.
I don't know how to, how to break through on that. It's a perception question, and I, and I don't know how to break through it. Everyone, everyone here, if anybody watches these meetings since the master plan was presented, they will know that all, all of us here have said, "All right, got it. We're, we're moving on," including me. I'm not, I'm not saying let's fight for the plan.
We're, I mean, there's an assumption that we've done something wrong, or that something's wacko over here. Well, how about maybe something wacko in finance, that they don't understand something?
I wasn't at the meeting, I can't tell you.
Mary Beth, you definitely, you're welcome to come up here.
Well, he's raising his hand, but he can't represent the Finance Committee, he's just a member.
He's in the Finance Committee.
Wait a minute. Hold on.
We have a Finance Committee person here too. I don't think you people understand what transpired at the meeting. I will be glad to comment on that. If you wish, if you do not, it's fine, I can put my arm down.
Do you want to hear what happened on finance?
I don't have any, I don't have any desire to hear.
I kind of agree with Mr. Gold.
I don't think it's pertinent.
I don't think it's pertinent. We shouldn't be discussing this, we've got a Warren article. I don't even understand why we're talking about this silly thing.
Well, because I felt that there, you had to understand what was happening.
But somebody's responded to some emotions. I mean, so Finance doesn't let them get up and talk as much as they want. I'm serious. This Warren article's pretty straightforward.
I, I think part, personally, do you mind if I just say something?
Oh, she's the chair.
Yes, yes, you may.
Madam Chair.
Richard, you may want to.
I think, I think that part of the issue is, like Mark Gold says, he's always gets resident comments, and Tom, and Marie, emails and phone calls. I think, I know that the Finance Committee has gotten some of those phone calls of people not willing to support what the last master plan that was presented to you. Now, I was here when that master plan was presented to you. I wasn't here, I watched it on television, and then, you know, sat through a presentation by decent company architects. And I think, you know, basically, I see it as, at this point, you know, five plans have been submitted to you, the Select Board, and had the Select Board said, as a result of getting resident comments, that that was not on the table, there wouldn't be this grand misunderstanding out there that the Select Board has this warrant article for the master plan. Now, you know, not everybody watches these meetings, and not everyone really knows what's going on out there. They only hear this rumor about this master plan that'll cost much more money than we had ever, in the past Town Meetings, represented that a new senior center would cost the town. And given the fact that there are three potentially expensive projects out there, you know, it would have probably been prudent if you had taken a position on the master plan so that it was public that that was no longer on the table to spend those kinds of funds in terms of, you know, the, the future budget of the town. And yet, you know, you, you know, because really, ultimately, you have, you're, this is your warrant article. It is not our warrant article, it is, it's the Select Board's warrant article.
Can I see that?
And the Finance Committee has gotten a lot of feedback about that master plan.
But I, but I think it's the responsibility of this board to set future direction for our community. That's our core responsibility.
I agree.
We were elected by the, the residents to do that. And we've got to watch out that we're not having the tail wag the dog. And if we're going to be jumping around on, like I said, the fish out of water, you said there's been five plans, and I agree there have been five. It's getting very confusing. I don't like to see that many plans, because that gives a lot of people different ideas that they can build up these different camps to, to superimpose their thoughts when it's not even on the table anymore. This started out as a fairly straightforward project, and it, it got skewed way over to the side, and now we seem to be skewing more, worrying about what Finance thinks about it.
Well, let me just say, you know, I have said from the beginning, based on research, that I did, under the original Town Managers Task Force, that building a senior center in any community is always a challenge. It is difficult to get through Town Meeting, it is difficult to get through the votes, it is just a bigger, much bigger challenge than most projects are. Why, I don't know, but it seems to be the case not only across the Commonwealth, but across the country. Many of these projects take many, many years to get off the ground and actually get approval at Town Meeting. So this really isn't a surprise to me. And you are correct. Initially, we had a standalone senior center that was presented for Turner Park to the Town Meeting, then to Bliss Park, and now we're over at Greenwood Park. And then, at Greenwood Park, again, because of the size of the park, it is much more of a problem to fit a building, or to, to fit all of the needs of the community within this very small parcel of land that already has many amenities that the town residents enjoy, which is why we need to get better focused on what we need to present to the town ultimately. But in order to do that, we need an architect, we need a survey, we need to make sure that, will this even fit in this particular space on this particular parcel of land? That's why, in my opinion, we need the 200, $200,000 or $250,000, is to get this much more focused at Greenwood Park for a site that works.
But that's exactly what the Warren article says, Mary Beth. It, it absolutely says to design a, a new, and it says new slash renovate, at Greenwood Center, at Greenwood Park, for the adult center. That's exactly what it says.
Well, maybe we should look at, I was looking at this, at the description. Description doesn't require an amendment, so whoever reads the description is to say, "An effort to plan for a new adult center, not a master plan for Greenwood," and then, which will be ongoing for the next three years.
I think, you know, I, I mean, like I said, I, I support the article, I support moving forward, I, I get it. But, we're like, how do you disprove a concept that's false to begin with?
Right.
That's what we're trying to do here, and it's, I'll be honest, it's a little more than frustrating for me.
And for me.
Because, for the same reason, you're right, not everybody watches the meetings, not everybody stays informed. But many of them are reacting to small bits of information very strongly, and I think now trying to target other town, important town business because of dissatisfaction with this one particular thing, where if they actually read it, they would have no reason to be dissatisfied with what it says. And that's the part that's frustrating me, and I think this whole amendment thing plays into all of that. And so when you talk about being kind of an emotional reaction, like I'm having right now, it is. And that's the part that's frustrating, where we're, we're starting to lose the forest for the trees on this a little bit, and when I'm, what I'd rather, rather have an amendment, I'd rather have the Board vote for a directive that says, "If this is approved, Town Manager, we're not going back to the master plan, we're going to start, and we're going to take a new direction." And then when this Warren article comes up, the person that does the motion can say, "And just for the Town Meeting's benefit, we've issued a directive to Town Manager that we're going to go in a different direction from, you know, we're not going to take, we're not going to take any single approach of the previous ones that have been proposed, we're going to, you know, take all of the ideas on the table and move in a new direction that makes sense for the seniors of amendment," or something like that.
Real quick, not going to try to muddy the water, but no person in their right mind would put a new adult center over there without thinking through what they were going to do at Greenwood Center. It has to be thought through. It has to be put on paper. It's insane not to think through it. I just would like to get us behind one thing that we can all support, and we keep pushing the same project. But that's, that's not happening. And it bothers me a great deal, because we're splintering this thing up now, and there's all these different people thinking this, that, and the other. But Stephen, you know me, to not have a full design over there, I don't, you can call it anything you want, but it is a master plan. It's not even a master plan design, because people don't even understand what a master plan is. You know what it is, you're in planning. It's a, it's, it's not even close to being a master plan. This is more of a concept of Greenwood Park, of what we want to do. It has to be on the table. And if they, I, I, if they don't like it, they, they're just going to have to get over it, because that's the sound decision for this town to be making. We are, we are advising the public the right decision for us to be moving forward with.
Well, I think, to your, to your point, that's the way I have felt all the way along. We did go through that exercise, you know, we, I, you know, I received a cost estimate from the architect. You know, I think it's, it's not, it's not favorable. I think the outcome, we did look at it, we did what we're supposed to do, we did look at it. I, there's something you could do, but is it the greatest bang for the buck for the senior community, but also for the entire community? I now have, of course, I doubt it now.
It's too much money.
Yeah, I mean, it's too much money, it's too much change, but we did look at it.
We did it.
We went through that exercise.
But it needs to be talked about with this thing running.
Yeah.
Because the public is not hearing all of it.
Right, but I, I think at this stage of the game, I, like I say, I was gagged, from, like a gag order from saying the words "master plan."
Don't ever say it.
But I understood that the master plan was a sensitive subject, and I didn't want to lose the momentum on the project, and I didn't want to have the $250,000 article fail, because people thought it was going for something that it isn't intended to be going for.
We just need to call something that cites master plan and tell it, "No, get over it."
I just think it's just, when you get on the floor at Town Meetings, just inform the, inform Town Meeting that this is not in front of the article.
I hope he's listening.
Marie, but it sounds like you're the only one of the four of us who think we need this amendment.
No, I'm saying we need to show, and I like Stephen's idea, we need to show some sort of directive that this Select Board is on board with the Adult Building Committee, and that we want, that we want to look for a building at Greenwood that is reasonably priced, how did you say it? And that, that we will consider what we're going to do with investment of the Greenwood building, but that we're looking to build a adult center at Greenwood Park.
And that, and that Warren article, to me, says exactly that. We're looking to put together money to develop...
That's fine. But I like the idea of a directive to the Town Manager to look at a building that, that will, what was the words you used? You, you were wordsmithing it very nicely.
I just, I have a gift, what can I say?
And now it's gone?
I have a gift for forming words, I don't have a gift for retaining them.
Oh, yeah.
So, no, it was something, direct the Town Manager, say, we direct, we've already directed the Town Manager that if this appropriation is approved by Town Meeting, to take the components of all previous proposals and form a new direction for a, a building for a, for an adult center that will, you know, meet the, meet the needs of our, our senior community.
You're going to, to, just, excuse me, can I have the floor?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to form a, a, a committee around here before you start spending money and talk about this thing, and maybe get a unified direction, go forward?
Well, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to do a charrette.
Yeah, right, a charrette.
I think we would kick, we would kick, I think I said in the description...
Town-wide.
Yeah.
But I know, but are you going to do the charrette yourself, or are you going to have an architect come in and do it?
I, I think TBD.
Yeah.
Probably have an architect come in and do it. But we would kick off, probably, with a charrette and lay the options out on the table, and, you know, you can do the stickers and vote on them, or do whatever. But just get some feedback from what we have. I don't want to waste the effort that's been put in, I don't want to waste the concepts of the things that have been done, whether it was for Turner, for Bliss, or for renovating Greenwood, or whatever.
Or programming space.
In addition to these, I mean, a lot of work's been done, a lot of good ideas have been had.
We also have Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, had surveys and everything else. There's a lot of information.
We don't, we don't need, like I said, the Lego pieces are all here.
They're all there.
We just need to get sift through them and build something out of them that people like. And that's, and again, there's, there's nothing in the article, like I said, we're responding to something that is not really, it's just a concept.
So is there a motion on the floor to, or to give a directive to the town manager?
I don't see a reason for it.
Well, we need to show that we are all in agreement that what we want.
We are. We voted on the warrant article to put it on the warrant. We support this warrant article the way it's written. I mean, what, what?
I think the problem is this, is the problem is the message that has gone out there. Not that we put out there, but that has been created out there. And that the board and the town manager split, and people wanna create this very expensive community center rather than an adult center.
What are you asking for? Something for us to agree here or to take to the town board?
That we agree here, and then we could say the select board is 100% behind.
Smells like a resolution, huh?
It is a warm puppy, and some people need warm puppies.
If you're not passing a bill, it's a directive to me. Again, I think we all kind of feel and think the same. I think this discussion has borne out that we're all kind of on the same page with what we wanna do. I think some kind of specific action in the form of a directive by the board, not to, not to convince ourselves, but to show the people out there that we hear that, and we're on the same page with them, is extremely important. And I don't, and even though it feels a little kinda just-for-showy, I do think because things did go a little sideways on the presentation of the plan, it's, it's a pretty low effort thing to do, just to satisfy the concerns that people have, because we don't want that uncertainty hanging over all the other town business that we need to vote on.
As people saying we're confused.
All right, so this is not new. This ordinarily happens in town meetings. People are gonna come up and say, "We're confused. We think it's for this whole center. We don't wanna give them the money." And generally, what happens is Stephen steps up and makes a statement to help clarify the confusion. But it sounds like in this situation, someone from the select board should do that, saying...
To avoid the chorus of boos that I'm gonna get.
Well, just to take the pressure off of you, but, but, you know, the chair could get up and say, you know, "We've discussed this as a board."
And we voted.
And we voted, and this is, you know, and we are gonna take all the pieces and put them together and come up with the best plan. And, you know, and I think that might be the way to do it. Just to reiterate that we, although, you know, there's confu, you know, they're gonna be confused. And usually Stephen takes the confusion away, but maybe you should this time, or someone else.
You haven't watched many town meetings, have you?
Thanks a lot.
I'm gonna say he takes away all of it. But he does, you know, we put it together, and I, I don't know if I'm, you think it should come from the board?
I think it should. I think it should come from the board, but I think we should give him a directive.
Do you have a motion?
I love a motion.
No, no, you know what you want.
You're the only one who knows what you want.
Put it out.
Okay, a directive to the town manager to...
Here. That's what Stephen wrote.
Okay, I thought you were giving it to me, Mark. Always, which one?
The very bottom.
A new direction, to take a new direction for town manager that meets the needs of the adult building community, the adult center community?
The senior community.
Okay. So we direct the town manager to take a...
So, direct the town manager that if...
A new direction. It says to take a new direction for the adult center that meets the needs of the adult community.
If the, if Article 31 is approved by town meeting.
Okay, so moved.
Actually, not even if. Just forget, drop that last part.
We don't care.
Yeah. Either way, we're going in a different direction.
Yeah, you take the new direction.
New direction.
If that warrant article somehow doesn't get approval, we write back to the next meeting with the name.
Okay.
Well, with that proposal, should it say that the select board is directing him? I don't know if he should mention the select board in his statement.
No.
I think he should.
It's a select board directive.
It's a directive that we're doing right now, so we're moving to direct.
And so between, you know, over the next week, Mary Beth can let her, her colleagues on the committee know, and we can, you know, put out there that this directive has been made. So when they go into town meeting, they know that the vote they're making on the existing warrant article satisfies their needs.
Second?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'll second, but it'll go to the planning board.
Richard's second.
Right?
No, I was saying, second?
No, no.
No, he's first.
No, nothing with the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah, no, nothing with the planning board. And then...
It doesn't go to the finance committee either.
Is she the real set?
And, yeah.
Who made the motion?
Richard.
I made the motion.
What is the motion?
Tom's second.
The motion is to direct the town manager to take a new direction for the adult center that meets the needs of our adult community.
No more flopping fish.
That we all are on board together, that the priorities is with the adult community.
Is that your...
That's my, in my discussion. I get to discuss.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, any further discussion? Are you sure you don't wanna say one more than Richard?
Nope, the one fuzzy, I gotta vote on it. I'm gonna close my eyes and vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Now, here's the question. Are we, are we gonna go with the current men, the warrant article?
Well, we don't have anything to do with any amendments that might occur off the floor.
Yeah, well, I think just keep it the way it is.
But you're absolutely right.
We're gonna fight for the full 250. And we feel the full 250 belongs in their hands, but as Stephen said, when the town does what the town's gonna do, we will learn if there's any other changes or what their directive is. But the point is, we are all in agreement that the master plan is not what we're heading for. We're looking for something that prioritizes the adult community and something we can afford. We're not looking for a Taj Mahal.
And I think there needs to be tighter coordination back with the select board from, from the committee themselves. They are, they are an extension of the select board. I think we need to be in the loop more on what's going on.
Okay, well, that's why I brought this up, on what happened.
Briefings before they move forward, so we're all going forward the same thing. We can likely avoid a lot of these confusion spots.
I don't think the confusion frankly was on the part of the committee. It's on the part of the public out there. And the feedback we're getting, the finance committee is getting, I assume other people here are getting about that master plan.
So, so Mary Beth, I mean, I mean, are you being told, you hearing people saying, "I'm not voting for this amendment because if I, this warrant article, because if I pass that, we're gonna get that monstrosity that showed up at that town, at that select board meeting." Is that what people are saying?
I'm getting feedback that there's a distrust that the money will be spent in an area that is not, that was not originally designated for a new senior center.
But the warrant article is written...
I understand that.
Says, it doesn't say for parking wreck department. It doesn't, it says the adult center. So, I mean, I guess we killed this fish a thousand times.
The horse is still breathing, Mark. I mean...
Yeah, but you know, you have to acknowledge, the Greenwood Center has the daycare center in it. So it's like Prago. It's in there.
Let's, let's, let's...
You can't separate it.
No, no, but let's not go there. Let's not go there yet.
Because I think just from a legislative standpoint, and I wanna go back to the original point of conversation, okay, 'cause we all, the directive, well, let's vote on the directive. All right now, I guess we're still in discussion, but anyway.
No one voted.
We voted.
So that we have a directive, that's, I mean, hopefully that satisfies the trust. I doubt it, but hopefully it does. But the fact of the matter is, even if you said to me, "Hey, draft an amendment to that article that captures what they wanna do," I don't know how I could possibly do it any differently than it already is. It's so, it's so open-ended. The only thing that's concrete in it is the words "adult center." And so that's where I think it's better for them to, as Arino knows, when you get on town meeting floor and amendments start flying, if people are confused now, it's gonna be very confusing. I think, I like the approach we did. I think it's gonna get to where, if the votes are there, we'll get to the place on May 11th that we wanted to be here tonight.
Richard, was there anything you felt you wanted to add to this?
My, my capacity as a liaison, it's to bring information back and forth to my committee from here, and to try to answer any questions that you may have. At this point, in deference to our town moderator, who'd probably like to get home tonight, I don't think it would accomplish anything, because you made your decision on here. The only question that I had was to clarify, and that's not really necessary at this point.
Thank you. Mary Beth, is there anything else you wanna do?
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
See, Pete showed up.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the moderator.
Do you wanna do Pete?
Oh, so what? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Peter did show up. Here. Peter, Peter, we're gonna have you go before I put the moderator on. Thank you. And he's here to interview for Cultural Council. And he's been there and done it. He's an incumbent. And would you wanna tell us what street you live on?
753 Frank Smith Road.
And thank you. Cultural Council's a great group, and you've done a lot of wonderful things. Do you have any questions for him?
Just in terms of, you know, the, just, I guess, really to remind people, you know, like some of the major events that are gonna be coming up soon that you guys have been planning, is there anything that...
Well, there's a, you know, I don't, I didn't bring a list of cultural events. No, it's fine. We, we approve them in October, and they play their way out throughout the year. I think last night, there was the glee club at, excuse me, at First Church. And I think Novi Conturi is at St. Andrews coming up. Those are the two that come to mind, because I was a choral director. But anyway, there, you know, we've, we've had lots of events all year, and I've done this, I think this is my third term, so we've, what we do see is a shrinking of funding, you know? I'm also on the Symphony Executive Board, and every, every, all the arts are shrinking. So we took it upon ourselves, I'm sure you're aware of it, several years ago, and began to do a fundraiser in the fall. And we made a little money, but it was more to, to gain an awareness for the town, that the town, most of the townspeople don't know we have a cultural council. I didn't until I was on it. I mean, I had, I had retired before I got on the cultural council. And someone asked me immediately, and I've been on it since, so I'd like to continue.
Okay, I just, in addition to the arts, you know, does, does your council do anything to expand other exposures, exposing ourselves to other cultures at all?
Well, I mean, we, we support, there's the Jewish Film Festival, which we give some money to every year, which has films, it's a number of towns. We, there, I'm trying to look back into all the projects that kind of come in front of us. There are book designing things, there are all sorts of historical things that have come across to be approved. As I said, I should've brought a list. It's really quite comprehensive. The only thing that's been a limiting factor has been a reduction in money. You know, each year, we, we have less money to give away.
All right, well, the only thing I would comment is just, you know, you know, we live in a pretty homogeneous community, and I don't think young people here get exposures to different cultures that they might need for the future, because the culture of Long Meadow is, really doesn't represent the rest of the world in terms of diversity. We're lucky, we're more diverse than some of our suburban, other suburban communities around here. But anything that our cultural council could do to, you know, especially expose the young people to the, you know, the cultural traditions and values that other folks have, and, you know, there's a lot of ways to do that, but, you know, I know it isn't just typically arts, but I know there are some ways through your group to be able to address some of those issues, and so we should keep it in mind.
I think that, you know, our event, for example, is a, you know, is an art event, and it has art from all over. I think that, I think we can only, our real existence is to distribute the money that is given to us to people that apply. So we don't do the applications. We just, we receive the applications. In fact, we don't even receive them anymore. They're received in the state, and then we do them. They send us a book with, it's all, it's all now done statewide. So that was a change this year. But, and we do go out and I've poked people to put a, you know, to put in an application. They're diverse, but, you know, they have to actually do the application process.
Is this lottery money, basically?
That's an excellent question. I, I don't know, you know, it, what happens is we, there's a cultural council amount that comes to the town. I think the town of Long Meadow also has a small amount that they put in with that. And then there's the amount that we have taken upon ourselves to earn and, and put in as well.
'Cause I know that that was always, well, of course, they're always saying, "Well, you know, with a lottery, you know, we're gonna give all that money for, you know, lottery arts, grants, and different things, and cultural, you know, programs, and they're making a lot of money in the lottery."
Well, we don't see much of it. I'll just make an editorial comment. Having been a musician and an arts director and everything for well over 40 some-odd years around here, and having remembered the promises of the lottery years ago, I'm still waiting.
All right, thank you.
Any, any other questions? You should send the chair when events are coming up, so we can make the announcement and let more people know.
I wasn't sure that, I'm not the chairman of the council, so I didn't know that wasn't being done.
Yeah, so be sure to send it, and then when we do the announcements at the beginning, you'll be sure to get it.
Sure, that's a great idea.
All right, thanks a lot for coming, and we'll be voting in the next meeting.
Absolutely, thank you.
And dear town moderator, I know you've been working so hard with all of your forums. The forums did go wonderfully. I, I felt it was a fabulous edition, and I know two nights, it was a lot of work, but it allowed more people to attend, so I wanna thank you for that addition.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the volunteers who came to help, as well as all of the citizens who arrived to deliberate the pros and cons.
Yes, it's becoming an exciting year between the forums and now in a two-night town meeting, and so it's going to be a different year.
Oh, yes.
And I know you came in front of us before, but I wanted to give another chance for you to come, and if there was anything you wanted to tell us about town meeting, or concerns you have, or any questions that the select board might have.
Well, wanna just encourage everyone to read the warrant. It is 44 articles long, several pages, that got sent to folks via the reminder, and it is worth reading to make sure that they, people have a sense of what is going to be discussed, and they are able to come to town meeting prepared with both remarks they'd like to offer, as well as an open mind to listen to what others have to say. If, I've already asked folks who've indicated they want to make presentations to please keep them as brief as possible. Main motion makers will generally be about five minutes. There are some extended projects that will receive between 10, 15 minutes. But for the most part, the lead proponents of articles should speak no more than five minutes, and other speakers will speak about two minutes each. We shall again have the three microphones for those in favor, for those who have questions or might want to make motions, and for those who are opposed. I wanted to note something as I was listening in. You had mentioned that the summaries don't have to be read, and that is very true. The summaries are in the warrant for people reading them, the select board when they're speaking to, a motion that the select board has created. Indeed, anyone who's making a lead motion on an article can say almost whatever they want. You don't have to just read what's, what's in the warrant.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a requirement at all.
Oh, that's good to know. We can riff.
Were there any questions that you had for me regarding any of the particular articles or about procedures?
Well, we are apparently gonna be changing the budget.
There are gonna be a few articles that will, the numbers will change. Article two, Snow and Ice.
Go to a negative number?
No, no, no. Article two, Snow and Ice, will go up from 200,000 to 225, 179. And then that will have an offset in Article 18. Article 18 will drop from 59, 500 down to 34, 321. Certainly Article six will now change the budget because of the water. And potentially, I'd like to make some small change to Article number four, where we have $25,000 going to legal and 25 going into veterans, to change that to 30, 20. We would be able, the legal expenses were over substantially already. We'll be able to make some changes within general government to fully fund that by the end of the year. And likewise, for the veterans' benefits, if we reduce this, we'll still have enough money by making internal changes within the fiscal year to cover all those veterans' benefits also. But I think we just, from that $50,000, they just like to change the allocation.
Okay, the, earlier when we had talked, we were thinking 250, or you were thinking 250 for that, and so I was thinking that would have to be an amendment instead of just a, a different motion.
250 for what, Beth?
The Article two, instead of $200,000.
You're saying 225, 179?
Correct. An earlier number that I had heard as a proposed change was 250. And so if it had been 250, that would definitely require an amendment, because it's a substantial, because it's a substantial, substantially large percentage over the general number, the initial, the original number. So when I look at those motions, I'll probably get back to you on whether any of them need to be amendments rather than motions. Main motions, I should say.
Those were the ones, just, you know, very quickly, that we would be reading potentially motions different from what's being printed.
Right, that's the other thing for citizens to keep in mind is that all, all of the things they're voting on are the oral motions. Articles are not self-starting and the articles themselves may be different than the motions. I'm sorry, the motions may be different than the articles. Slightly different.
Are those the only changes on the warrant articles?
Uh, yes.
I wanted to talk to you about the beginning of the meeting.
Sure.
I know it gets very long sometimes. Do we have a list of people that have retired and quit that we're going to be reading aloud?
We knew it was going to do that. I think it was always read too.
It was always, it's been read in the past, I'm just not sure if we, how many of these lists should we be reading? Should we be reading?
I forgot my suit, my hazmat suit.
Thank you, Mark.
No, I, I think, for the sake of time, one or two years ago, I just put it up on the screen and left it there for a minute so people could see the names. It's up to you guys.
I just, I don't want it to be too long. I know people complain that we spend so much time in the beginning because we're handing out two awards and then if we read through that, it's your meeting and so it's really up to you and you, how you want it handled.
Well, the awards presentation is select board, so that's, that portion of the meeting is yours. The only thing that I'm obligated to do by law is to have an invocation. I have the invocation read, we have a pledge of allegiance. There's, Boy Scouts will bring in the flags again this year and we'll have a performance of the Star Spangled Banner and that's, those are the, both the bylaws and our traditions that I've upheld.
Are we going to do a moment of silence for the loss?
Oh, we, that always follows the pledge of allegiance and this year I will call for a moment of silence to remember Warren Coles as well as our service members and veterans who have passed away.
But how do you feel? Do you think the names should just be on the board or do you think someone should read them?
I have no preference on that one.
You have no preference? How does the board feel about that?
I think they ought to be read.
You think so?
It's two minutes, three minutes? I mean, it's not like it's a twenty-minute list.
I also think that people understand that that beginning portion is the community building portion and there is something nice to be said for people who have given so many years of service to the town to be recognized. In terms of a procedural question, I don't have any preference, but it's a community thing.
Anything else that's going to change on this town meeting that we haven't done in the past we're going to be doing now?
Well, other than the two nights, I mean, that's, at the very beginning, I would ask for a motion to be made and I'll share that with you and with you, Debbie. A motion to adjourn to a time certain that once we conclude the business of articles one through twenty-nine, at the end of the meeting, we adjourn to Wednesday, May tenth at seven P.M. And that way, at the end of the meeting, we don't have to worry about making the right motions because we'll all be probably tired by then. So you get that motion made at the very beginning, ahead of any of the articles and then we'll adjourn the meeting instead of dissolving it. On May tenth, we'll, once the quorum has been met, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll open up the meeting and then at the end of the meeting, we'll dissolve it. The key difference is adjourn and dissolve. But handling the motion to adjourn to a time certain is the first motion under our business.
And obviously daycare is being offered a little. The registration deadline is tomorrow, end of the day tomorrow. So if you haven't registered and you want to use your, avail yourself of Greenwood for the meeting, we also are offering some shuttle service.
That's what I hear.
So if you wanted to leave your car there, just call the adult center and line that up and then register for daycare, but that is something new this year.
And you said you're also offering car service for people who couldn't drive?
I'm not, but the town is.
The town is, yeah, but that's something that is being offered.
There's no Rebecca Uber. The town is doing that. The other thing I had wanted to mention, I had forgotten earlier. If there is a non-voter who wishes to speak, they have to seek permission before the meeting begins. I've received, I've received requests for permission from two people so far and have approved those two people, but if anybody else, and that would include children. So children are not voters. If there are any children who are standing in line and I have to be the one to say, I'm sorry, I did not grant you permission to speak, that is unfortunate. But it's something that I try to emphasize and the reason I do that is because I like to talk to non-voters about how town meeting runs, what you can expect, what the rules are and make sure that people are prepared. And certainly, for children wanting to speak, that's even more important. So it is out of a concern for everyone's well-being that I do that.
Hey Deb, remind me to put together that list. We're going to have some consultants and department heads who are non-town meeting voters that we're going to do them.
Sure.
I talked to the moderator, having a list of people that are involved in some of the town articles that may, they may not speak, but just upfront, here's a list of ten or fifteen people that are involved in preparing some of the stuff that will present this, so make sure I don't forget to do that.
How would you, how would you want a request to not read the entire motion presented?
You would say, I move in terms of the article.
Okay.
Very simple.
Okay. Do you have any, any thoughts? I know number thirty-one is very, very lengthy.
No, thirty-two.
Yes, excuse me, thirty-two, Mark, you're right. And then we've got, we've got thirty-three, what do you think on that? You want to read that thing through or you want to?
Well, I think we could probably see how it goes with doing it with almost most of the articles, right?
Well, no, I'm asking her opinion.
Oh, you're asking, I thought you were asking Marie. Thirty, as you say, thirty-two is very long, goes on four.
Thirty-two is massive.
One, two, three, four, four and a half pages.
Right.
I would strongly recommend moving in terms of the article if there's nothing that is changing in that article.
How about, what kind of limit do you think is fair to impose on how big the article is? Like thirty-four, do you suggest we read that entire article?
I mean, that one, you, that's another one that could be moved in terms of the article. It's substantive and it's going to get slightly repetitive.
See, thirty-five is too.
Yes, same thing. Well, oh, I should note on that one, thirty-five is my article. So I shall be stepping down from the dais at that point and the clerk will call for an election of a substitute moderator. And.
Do you have a volunteer or someone you're bringing forward or?
Well, I've asked Mike Calick if he would serve as the assistant moderator. Should we have an overflow room? And so I imagine he'll put his name up for election and Mr. Crane can put his name up for election. People can vote between the two if you really want.
Town council can also sometimes serve as, if, if Mike Calick is in an overflow room, someone could nominate the town council to be moderator or acting moderator.
Right, and so I would be stepping down and then I would be moving in terms of that article myself.
Okay, because I see, obviously I'm asking questions about the articles that I'm going to read and I see a lot of these is pretty easy to move in terms of the article, there's a lot of.
It's a lot faster that way.
Yeah.
I mean.
How do other towns handle it? Do they do either the smaller ones?
Yeah, you can do that and.
You can do it for anything, right?
Yes. If people have the articles in front of them, that's the best way.
The real benefit to reading the thing doesn't seem to be apparent.
If they don't, it's only if they don't have the warrant in their hands is that a problem, really.
Right, but they'll get a copy of the warrant when they come in.
Well, they have it through the reminder, so they're.
Not everybody gets the reminder.
Oh, I didn't know that.
A lot of people don't get.
They are available and check in.
Right, right.
Yeah, they have copies when they check in.
Thanks, I didn't know that.
Snowbirds, they don't want this stuff.
Okay, so just, just good judgment call then.
Do we have the actual list of who's reading what?
Yeah.
Oh, we do?
Not yet.
Yeah, I got it early.
You got it early, oh.
I requested a copy today.
Because you have to practice, Richard, is that it?
No, I wanted to see, I wanted to see.
Take your speech coaching.
I wanted to see what night I was going to have to be present. I've got to be there for the second night because I start out. Yeah, short is strong, I got the second night. What'd you say, has it changed?
It's going to change with the numbers that the poll just.
Okay. You give me down to maybe one?
Yeah, that's just.
Yeah, I got, I got most of the second night meeting.
He checked up what he wants to do and then everybody else can.
No, I didn't, I didn't do that, did I? I take it how it rolls.
But I would encourage you, you know, you can move in terms of the article and then the summary is there for people to read. But if the select board provides their opinions about why they're voting for or why they would urge somebody to vote for the article, it livens things up more so than just reading.
That's true.
And, you know, at certain points, especially for ones that you did not submit, I will ask for any select board position on this article or.
That's a good idea.
Or any, you know, for finance-related ones, I would ask for the finance committee's recommendation. Even though it's printed, they can still speak to it and same for planning board and school committee, et cetera.
I guess this is a request, but I think it was last year or the year before. Things got really hectic when we started moving things around and I, I think you have the prerogative to not allow things to move out of order, especially we've got six citizens petitions that could really throw things out of whack. I assume you're not going to allow things to move from the second day to the first night.
Correct.
But we could end up really messed up if we start moving things around and I don't know how we end up doing this, but I'd ask you to use your best judgment to kind of keep things under control. It was really almost hysterical that what we were doing at some point.
Well, if the, anyone tries to move in front of the seniors, the citizens petition, they might be right on the floor.
And they may want to move it to the first thing in the night.
Well, they're number two on second night.
What a coincidence.
If I may, the, I am still new in my job and I want to make sure that I'm doing things, according to Hoyle, I try to stay out of strategy with regard to movement of articles. No one has asked me about moving any articles. It is, my job is to make sure that the meeting gets its business done. If the meeting decides that it wants to move an article into a different order than it occurs within the warrant, it's the meeting's prerogative to do that and the meeting can vote yea or nay to do that. If I say no, I'm not going to accept that request, then I am inserting myself into the process where I don't really need to be. My job is to make sure that people understand what article we are voting on, making sure they understand, you know, that this is the speaker in favor, this is speaker pose, et cetera, and to make sure that the talk is regulated and the votes are called accurately. But to intercede in a process, I feel uncomfortable to do that.
I have another question going back to, I move in terms of the article. Now, that would be for everything that's written on the top, but it's not the description. So then do you go back, in other words, say, there's a back and forth that occurs? And so we move the article and then you say, what is it that you say?
You may speak to the article.
You speak to the article and then we talk about that. So when we move to the terms of the article, it just means we're not reading that part.
Correct.
But then you're still going to say to the select board member.
Now, you, so the order would be Ms. Angelides, I move in terms of the article, article thirty, whatever it is. Second, you may speak to the article.
And that's when we can read.
Speak to the motion, I'm sorry.
And that's when we read that italics part.
You can say whatever you'd like to say. You may read that section or you may say something else.
Okay, okay.
And that's when, I mean, if it's, and then I'll ask for another board's opinion or recommendation if it's a finance committee recommendation as well. And that's when I'll open it up to the floor after board recommendations.
And if the town meeting complains about, I move in terms of the article, they can stop that? If we decide not to read it and we're just going to move in terms of the article?
I've never heard anyone complain about moving in terms of the article.
If they aren't, if they're trying to lead through the thing, they can say, they can stand up and go to the yellow mic and say, can you please read the article language? Can you read what we're?
And then I'm happy to do that. Yep.
And the other thing is, I think on the ones like the Goldway Trust, some of our pro forma ones, you can say, move in terms of the article second and just that's it, leave it at that.
That's true.
And just say, speak in terms of the article and say, does anyone have any questions? And then no one's going to have any questions on one of the Goldway Trust and so then we just go right to the vote and save ourselves thirty-five seconds.
And thirty-five seconds all adds up.
I did have a question for the moderator. There was a little confusion last year when a select board member wants to speak either for an article or against an article. Are we going to be able to use the front mic?
The front mic is for those who are making the lead petition or the lead motion on an article. And so if the board is making its position, you know, either reading the summary or giving some arguments in favor of that board position, the board member may use that front microphone. If we've already turned it over to the floor and a board member, whether it's the select board, school committee, finance committee, would like to make a comment, they can go to those floor microphones because the meeting is then open to the board, the floor. If a person is asking for a, asking a question and the select board member or the finance committee or the school committee is the one to answer it, then they may use that front microphone.
Well, we had last year, we had select board members that didn't get to make comments because they couldn't get around over there fast enough to get in the lines because we're up front. That's the reason I was wondering, that's, it poses a little scramble on us to be able to get out there.
The other problem was when the finance committee would make a comment and then we, in other words, we read the bottom thing and then finance committee said, we don't agree with this because of this. If we disagreed with their characterization, we can't use our mic because we've used our one bite at the apple and we've got to run back down there to say, no, finance committee is misinterpreting the warrant article? I mean, I don't want it to become a debate between the two, but I also don't want. Because I got thrown last time when they came up and said something and I felt I couldn't respond to them.
I understand.
You couldn't get out to the mic.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, even if we do get to the floor, sometimes they called the question and we didn't get to speak last year, that's what happened. They said, let's move the question and so, you know, I think that it's difficult when select board members who've spent a lot of time reading about this, discussing this over the year and then when we have an opinion, you know, we weren't able to give it, you know. Because there are some issues where I think we should have the right to give an opinion, but we find ourselves at a disadvantage, just, I mean, you know, I guess, you know, they have the right to call a question after so many speakers, but, you know, I don't know. I thought that.
Well, I just think it puts us at an unfair advantage because we're not out in the audience to jump up in line and I, nor do I think we should have to. You know, our position is up front and we're speaking and I think we should be able to address articles that come up. Like, I remember specifically what you're talking about, Marie. You didn't have a chance of getting out there to rebut what they had said. And it was kind of negative as far as I was concerned, the fact that we weren't really doing what the visitor or what the public needed to be done. They weren't really hearing from us because the debate was shut down before we could even get up to respond to it.
And I think, it wasn't last meeting, but a meeting before, I remember someone saying from the floor, and the select board's intention here is to do this, which wasn't our intention at all. And so if it ever is, if they ever say something directly to what, you weren't, I don't think you were the moderator at that and I just want to be able to be able to respond to any characterizations that the select board, who they were.
At my first town meeting, there was someone who had said the select board's motivation, they want to do this because blah, 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 blah. And I interrupted that citizen to inform him that we cannot make some judgments about what we think other people are, their motivations are, we can't speculate on their motives. So that wouldn't have been proper. Should that happen and I fail to note it and I fail to hear it, I welcome someone requesting a point of order that, you know, things have not been followed appropriately. To the concern of the select board getting preference over citizens from the floor in the order at the microphones, I put that question to the Massachusetts Moderators Association email distribution list and the overwhelming. And they overwhelmingly said that the citizens do get the preference, the people who are in line at the time, get the preference once floor is up for debate, open for debate. The microphone in the middle, the one that's yellow, marked yellow, is for questions and motions. And so, if there is a question perhaps that you have of the Finance Committee, usually there is no one at that microphone. That one always gets a turn, and it does not count toward the five speaking in favor and five speaking opposed. So those, if you do have questions of a Finance Committee, you can ask that question there. However, if you have positions and want to elaborate on those positions, you can have one of your members go to the microphone that you want to make sure that your voice is heard at. But the Select Board does get a great deal of preference and deference by setting the, by creating the warrant themselves, by having the bulk of the time speaking to it at the very beginning, and then being available to answer questions should any citizen ask those questions.
Any other questions for Rebecca?
Thank you for taking that question to your group.
Sure. I mean, I know it's probably not the answer you want to hear.
Yeah, I can tell you, I don't agree with you.
And I understand that, and I respect that. And if I were in your position, I probably would feel the same way, too.
I would think you would.
I understand that completely.
You know, especially when we get up there and get bushwhacked by some crazy statement that lingers in the ears of people, and we can't put that statement to rest. But anyway.
I mean, not to belabor the point, but she and I have kind of had this discussion--
Yeah.
Also separately, I also disagree.
Yeah. We're all friends.
But to--
Civil.
And I was even willing to split hairs, though I don't have too many to spare--
Yeah.
--and say that I feel like, on the warrant, there's a difference between Select Board business legislative initiatives brought to the warrant by the executive branch and everything else. And I think that, my view is, if it's something that the Select Board developed, adopted, and is bringing to town meeting as its representative, as its representative government, then there should be, you know, the opportunity for Select Board to communicate from the front to the town meeting and have that colloquy, even if it's, whether there's a statement of opinion of the thing for a quick Q and A on those items. If the Select Board, if a Select Board member wants to weigh in on whether or not we should be a pollination-friendly community, I agree with the moderator that that's, that's a citizen's petition, or that's, it's not an area in the purview of the Select Board. Capital, community preservation requests aren't really a Select Board thing, even if the Select Board waves them through the warrant. Those would be things I would say, I agree with the moderator's perspective on this, that the Select Board then is, in effect, speaking of citizens. But things like Select Board, you know, things that came only from this group.
Well, if, I mean, at any citizen petition article, I would ask what the Select Board opinion is or recommendation is, or what, say, a Board of Health position is, or what the Planning Board is. Is there a relevant board or committee that would like to make a statement? And those get preference ahead of the floor comments. So on any article, the boards do get the first bite at the apple.
Yeah. If we always agreed on everything, it would be simple. We take a vote, but it's always, you know, sometimes it's just wins by one vote.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It should be an exciting two nights.
Hopefully not too exciting.
Thank you.
The moderator supplying snacks?
If you want me to.
Still had some left over from the forums, huh?
Sadly, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I'm going to jump back to the Charter Review Committee charge composition. My only thought, throwing it out there, is we should, I think we should have seven people. I don't want a group of three people being able to decide what's coming forward to the Select Board to get to town meeting. How does everyone else feel about what the composition--
Okay. Before you start, Mark, in terms of where this came from, I basically threw it together based on other things. No pride of, you know, no pride of authorship on this one. It's just a conversation starter.
So, Maria, I guess I have a more general question about this Charter Review Committee, only because what I read here is different from what I thought I was voting on when we said, yes, we want a Charter Review Committee. Because what this does is proposes to establish a standing committee. We're talking about, you know, it's going to be, the first person's going to be, have one-year term, and then the next person, two-year terms, you know? As opposed to what I more perceived it, when I voted for it, as it was an ad hoc committee with a finite life, a start and an end. Everybody gets appointed at the same time, everybody ends at the same time, and they report back to the Select Board on, yeah, we need a Charter Commission, we want to propose these bylaw changes, or all these things, fine and dandy, and we're done. And so, that's why when I read this over the weekend, I said to myself, you know, it's far different from what I thought. And I just wanted to--
That's just, as he said, that's not my ideas. That's just--
No, and obviously, that's a catch. I didn't, when I was doing it, I didn't catch it.
Okay. So, okay, so--
No one put that together, say, this is what we have to do. It was just a conversation starter.
Some of those ones we've done recently, and you're right, I mean, I was thinking, you know, assembling it like we assemble normal boards and committees, but you're right, that's not really the intent.
Okay. So I didn't misread the intent. This just wasn't--
I did.
Fine. Because I, I, I--
I agree.
I mean, I started rewriting this, appointed by the Select Board for a one-year term. And I don't know--
Your answer's right.
I don't know if one year is the right term, or six months, or how, you know, 90 days--
I would say at least one year. It takes, how long for them to get up and going?
Tell them to get up and go.
Get up and go.
You know, I, I just don't think we need to drag this on. I mean, the intent, you know, especially, Stephen, somebody included minutes from the meeting that this was formed, and Richard's point back at that meeting was, you know, every so often, and it'd been 10 years, and we hadn't done anything yet, so it's time to do it. So I think, if we're going to do this, make it finite, make it short and sweet, and get the information.
Yeah, I think you need at least five members.
Because I'm just saying, you get five, then a quorum is three, and three people are suddenly making all those decisions. And you could end up with a little--
Well, at least five.
But they're not making decisions, they're only making recommendations. The flip side of that is a seven-member committee, you need four for a quorum, and sometimes that's like summer vacation, you can't get people. And it's unwieldy and can be, it doesn't matter. There's no great--
How many was on the original Charter Commission?
I would ask an original Charter--
Yeah. She's there at the border.
Ten or nine?
Nine.
Okay, I know it's a pretty large group.
She said nine.
All right. Well, I would think that the size, you know, I could see five, I could see it being smaller. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think that, you know, as they go through, you know, they're going to identify different areas. At the end, they're going to come up with the final product that they all vote on. And hopefully, all five of them would be there to vote on the final product. And that, you know, if we look at, you know, eight meetings, 12 meetings, you know, I think, usually, I would think with eight meetings, they'd be able to get through it. And the other thing is, I thought about, you know, would we want to prioritize a person from the Select Board, a person from the School Committee, a person from the Finance Committee--
Can't have somebody from the Finance Committee on it.
Oh, you can't have--
They're banned from being part of any Select Board committee.
Oh, okay. But are there committees that we should have, you know, we should say, well, you have, they don't have to have someone be on. You say, you know, there would be a seat for someone from the School Committee, there would be a seat for someone from the--
But you can also, I mean, I can argue that the zoning ZBA or the Planning Commission are important. I think whoever, you can put five unrelated people here, and make sure they interview the right people, they'll get the right input, whether it's from the ZBA or the Planning Commission, or the Finance Commission Committee, or whoever it is. I agree, there's some people you want on a town, but I don't know that it's so critical that they be on the committee to get their point across. And one could argue it may be better that they interview two or three people from these other committees.
That's one of the things that, that's one part that I did give some thought to, and I was going to start to do that.
Okay.
But one of the missions that we've talked about is looking at the current composition and roles of our boards and committees. And if you start saying, it could easily devolve into a turf fight. And I thought, having some people with an outside perspective, and kind of have them get both sides of the issue, or if there aren't both sides of the issue, get, you know, the perspective of the board members and Select Board members and staff potentially, and let them go from there. But if it's, members of those committees are on the thing, it makes it a little more slanted.
Yeah. I was looking at seven independent people from the residents, not having even us on it, because we will, we'd be very opinionated when it comes to recall of Select Board members.
I wouldn't.
But you can't. You can't do that.
Right.
You can't have recall of Select Board members.
Well, no, what they could do is make that recommend, they can make a list of recommendations to us, and then that needs to go to--
They're not even allowed to look at, not even allowed to look at, but they're not really allowed to recommend on term, composition, or appointment of Select Board Town Manager. It has to be a Charter Commission at those--
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if they come up with these lists of recommendations that pushes them into the Charter Commission, then they say, we recommend these four changes, which means we need the Charter Commission. So they should be looking at those possibilities.
Maria, I'd like to throw out something a little radical here. You talked about seven people and some others, but you said five. What if we made it six people? And I say that because then if you get enough to put it on the list, it's essentially a two-thirds majority, it's, nothing's going to squeak by. I mean, there's nothing that says committees have to be an odd number of people. And something that's as impactful as recommendations to bylaw changes or potentially amendments to our charter, I'd like to see more than just a squeak-by-the-nose--
Yeah.
--majority in this committee. So maybe six is the right number of people. I don't know.
But they're not going to be allowed to change the charter.
No, but they're going to be allowed to recommend it.
They're pushing things down the road, which will be very powerful. And that's why I was afraid you'd get three people on a committee, that all of a sudden, those three work together and cut everyone else out. But if you have a supermajority of six, or you have--
No, if you have six people on the committee--
Six.
That means four people's a quorum, and, you know, and takes four votes to approve something.
Well, is there a motion to take it to six or seven?
So, what do you want? Six or seven? Six, we'll go with six. I move--
We're at five now.
No.
No, we're nothing.
We're nothing.
Take a motion, we'll go to six. If we present a motion, then we put the committee at six.
And for how long a term?
I'd say at least a year. I'd set it up for a year.
One year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So six members?
Mm-hmm. For one year? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. And for one year, that sounds good.
And in their directive, right now, it says, the Charter Review Committee shall draft policies and procedures for review by the Select Board. Charter changes can only be approved by a town meeting. Commitee shall select input from the Select Board, Town Manager, and Town Council. I think they should solicit input from anybody they want to, very honestly.
Well, I like the idea of, once you put the committee together, that they put their mission together and come back to us with a mission. That's what the Energy Task Force did, and that's what you're probably going to do with your post-betaduts.
Yeah. Okay.
So is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor? Which is six--
I still--
With one year.
But there's no, but we have no charter for them. We have no directive for them.
Well, right now, we're doing the composition.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the motion on the floor.
Right. So I think, to your point, Mark, this is general.
Right.
It sets a couple of next steps. But the first thing we advertise, we put this as the thing we advertise, we get members, we interview them, we appoint them, and then at their first meeting, they're going to come up with their, what they think is going to be their way of moving forward, and they're going to bring it back to you, and you're going to say, yeah, that sounds good, or no, we want you to do it a different way. The level of specificity that you need to get to is going to come after we have the committee appointed.
There's this one sentence that kind of makes me a little nervous, and it says, any changes related in any way to the composition or mode of election or appointment and terms of Select Board, the Town Managers must be considered by an elected Charter Commission.
That's the law.
That's state law. That's state law.
Okay. But this is not an elected Charter--
Therefore, it eventually says, so they can't consider that.
This is just reminding them of that, that this, they're basically going to do a review and then submit that review to us, and we can use that as a guide, as a way to guide us in terms of what needs to be--
I mean, to me, basically, it's a review of bylaws and charter that's amendable, issues in the charter that are potentially amendable to make things work more smoothly.
Say, the Charter Review Committee says, you know what, it's really tough to start town meetings at seven o'clock, they should start at five o'clock. It's in our bylaws and the charter that starts at, it starts, the date is in the charter, the time is in the bylaw. You could have meant, you say, we recommend changing the bylaw, start earlier in the day, or let's have it on Saturday. That's the type of stuff that they could bring forward. That's not, you know, yeah, they may look at boards, committees, they may look at roles, responsibilities of non-Select Board Town Manager, people in the charter, but they may make something as simple as, you know, let's start timing a different time.
Okay. All right. I'm ready for vote.
All right. All those in favor? Okay.
Not sure--
And then it would be, then you need to vote on the committee charge as amended.
Committee charge?
That's the sheet that was in here. You just amended it to go for six people, six members for one term, for a one-year term.
Right.
Oh, I see. So then--
So--
But, so, but--
So we have to vote on the charge--
But are we going to leave in the, the sentence that says, the composition of the committee shall include, to the extent possible, at least one member from the 2004 Charter Commission? Do we want to leave that in? Do we want to say, all committee members must be eligible to vote at town meeting? We probably want to leave that in. Right?
I felt like just the institutional memory from the 2004 Charter, because having someone there that can at least speak to, what did they mean when they did this? Like, what was the purpose of this, having somebody that may be able to remember, oh, in 2004, this is why we did this? But you don't have to have it.
No, I don't see anything wrong with it. I just wanted, I just asked the question. I mean, I question more the statement, the sentence that says, committee shall select, solicit input from the Select Board, Town Manager, and Town Council, as being potentially too restrictive.
Yeah, it would just be--
I don't think it's, I don't think it's limited, it wasn't intended to be limited to that, but they have to talk to us.
So maybe you should say, the committee shall, as a minimum, solicit input from--
Yeah.
All right.
All right. So, well, there's a lot of changes on this charge. One is we're getting rid of the, so the charge should be, there will be a Charter Review consisting of six members, appointed by the Select Board for one year. All committee members--
So then, it'll say, the composition of the committee shall include, to the greatest extent possible, at least one member of the 2004 Charter Commission, all committee members who are eligible to town meeting. That's just that. And upon appointment, blah, 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 blah. And then, the commitee shall, at a minimum, solicit input from the Select Board, Town Manager, and Town Council. That's the only other change.
Is everyone satisfied with those changes only?
Yes, so moved.
And Rebecca, I mean, Debbie, did you catch all that?
There's a typo.
Most of you accepted the committee charge as amended, but nobody made the motion.
I'll forward the motion.
Okay, Tom makes a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No worries. No.
Okay.
Yeah, you got it.
There we go. Now we're moving forward. All right. Now, the next thing is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund policy. My brain is fried. I don't remember. I want to push that forward because...
Yeah, you are.
Okay. Really, I can't remember. Did I have it in the packet?
Yes.
There's a memo in there.
Okay.
Oh, no, this is the article. We have something else.
So, really, the reason behind this is...
I don't see it.
It's there. I have the summary called Stormwater Policy Outline.
It's a memo from me.
Oh, it's a memo in the Town Managers report?
Stormwater...
No, it's an agenda item. So, the concerns were expressed by residents, which is why you wanted to develop an outline. I think, basically, and I...
Oh, I see it now. Okay.
So, the, so, wait, let me...
Okay.
When we developed the Stormwater bylaw, and we put that in the warrant, there was some discussion that there was probably going to be, need to be some select board policies that were going to follow along with that, the areas of when to bill, how to bill, you know, the basics of how you operate the utilities, similar to the Select Board having many policies for water and sewer. We didn't really do it, mostly because of time, but also because there's no sense in having policies if there's no bylaw. It was expressed, I think, by a resident, to you, Marie, that there was concern about, could the Select Board then make this something different than what's being presented at the town meeting through the use of policy initiatives?
Well, no, we had talked about we wanted to limit the cost, the rates, to the MS four and the mitigation need for that. And there was concern it would be, and we had discussed that we didn't want it to be, to drag DPW costs into this and build it up like the other enterprise funds are, reflected with the equipment and the personnel. So I thought...
I mean, that may be what a resident wants. That doesn't, that doesn't make it right. And I think the point is, I, the outline, the point of the outline is to say, here are the areas the board needs to look at as it develops its policies. And I think it's important to show the residents in town meeting that you are thinking about limitations on this. But I don't think you want to have a policy that says, "We shall never charge more than this," or, "We shall not do," you don't want to limit it because no fee that we have is really limited that way, and you need to have some flexibility in doing it. And when you impose a fee, there is always the chance that's going to go up. And I think that's an accepted part of assessing fees and, or imposing fees. But I think you want to make it clear as a policy statement that our goal is to only cover the increased costs that we're going to be experiencing. And that's why the fee proposal that was in the warrant in the summary is that $2.25 per ERU. And that's what you guys agreed to. But, you know, I don't know, you could write a policy here that says, "We shall keep it at $2.25 in ERU for three years," or something like that, but I wouldn't put that in the bylaw.
Well, the policy, and I still, I still can't find it on my computer.
Here, I'll give you the hard copy.
It's not there.
What's it called? I can't find it either.
Oh, you know what? It's not. It's not. It was a supplement. I emailed it out.
Okay.
That's why.
All right. Yeah, because...
Yeah, it came out in the email.
All right, so what I had written...
Marcus is more organized than the rest of you.
Okay.
No, he sent it on a separate email today.
The policy that I had sent you, I guess, didn't get out. Is that in the supplement? Which is, "The rate shall be set after town meeting by the Select Board. The rate will be based on the cost of the DEP program, refunds of previous unused funds, and any stormwater projects approved by town meeting to be paid for by the fund. Warrant articles will include fee impact. The testing results will be reported."
Yeah.
And you said you didn't want to do any of that.
I said that that should be, all of that stuff should be looked at in a comprehensive outline of policy decisions that are going to need to be made by the board.
And I think we need to, I think we need to start looking at the policy decisions to be made by the board. Am I missing something in the...
No, no, you're saying exactly what I said.
Okay.
But you wanted to draft a policy that said those things. We talked about, and it was a while ago, but we talked about it, and I talked you out of making a policy statement like that without having some further, to get to that, to get to that endpoint, without having gone through a policymaking process at the board level, I felt was a little cart before the horse. But I do agree, we did agree that the board should start talking about this and be ready for town meeting discussion of, "What are you guys going to do with this thing if we give you the bylaw?" So unfortunately, it's, you know, I don't know if we're timed to do it now, but...
Well, so that's my concern, is everything that we said has never really been memorialized on what's going to happen with the Stormwater Utility. And there's, that we're setting the rates. I mean, all, right now, we, and that's why I think Stephen put together that memo.
But Maria, the issue for me comes back to, you know, if there's a lack of trust between the town residents, the town meeting, and the Select Board that we're going to, you know, charge everybody $10,000 a month for Stormwater Utility, you know, I think the same people are going to say, "Yeah, well, that's a policy," and they're going to override it the next time.
That's the same person who's actually going to say that very thing.
Policies. And if you really believe it, write it into the warrant, to the bylaw. And the fact is, we don't want to write it into the bylaw, that we're never going to make any changes because we don't know what the EPA is going to bring to the Stormwater regulations. So, you know, to some degree, we're trying to write a policy to mitigate a trust factor that policies won't mitigate.
Well, we do have policies in place for the other enterprise funds.
And we piloted every one of them, or overrode every one of them sometime in the last three or four years because it made sense to do it at the time, not because we were being flippant or being irresponsible.
So are we saying we're not putting together policies, or we're just going to do it tonight? Because we should have policies. If we're going to wait till they get...
If we don't do it tonight, we're not going to do it until after the thing passes. And once it passes, then we ought to have policies.
Then we do agree we need to have policies once it passes.
We ought to when it's early, but I don't think you need a policy to try to get the warrant article passed.
Okay, so this should be on the future agenda if we do get the bylaw passed. Okay, so that was my question. I wanted us to, and you put that thing together so we see where we're going with it. All right, building committee schedule. When are we going to start the building committee?
You said after DPW gets out of the way.
Yeah, we said probably July 1st.
So are we talking about, so you're talking July 1st, you're not talking right after the vote in June?
That's two weeks after.
Okay, because my concern is if we wait till July 1st, a lot of people leave beginning of July. Should we aim to the end of June so we can at least get them up for their first meeting?
We can try, sure.
Okay. Town manager evaluation. I'm trying to get the schedule set up for the next few months.
I don't think we should even do an evaluation.
We should not do it?
Just fail them. Make it simple this year, right, Stephen?
You said something earlier, and I was like, "I guess we can take this thing off the agenda." I forget what it was, but I did get you something like, "Well, could we take item number four off and do business, please?"
Maria, I'd recommend that as the chair, you put together a schedule and just tell us that's the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? And if it requires an additional meeting somewhere in the long line, we'll do that. But in the past, excuse me, what we've done is the chairs developed some system, mailed it out, say, "I need your response by such and such a date," collate it, and schedule it. Otherwise, we're going to sit here all night.
And are you guys happy with the form we have?
It doesn't matter. You're the chair. Just go ahead and do it.
We've used several forms in the last few years, and each one works well and doesn't work well.
The form has not actually changed really meaningfully the last two or three years.
I'm sure that the town...
I can tell you, we've talked about it many, many times.
I'm sure the town manager and the chair can discuss this in more detail and bring it to the board.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right.
But I would ask that we try to work this through so somewhere right around July 1st it's completed?
Oh, yes.
Because it's the end of our fiscal year?
I'll get the evaluation form out to everybody. I'll collate. We'll plan our first meeting in the beginning of, I don't know, when our meetings are in June.
We'd be looking at June.
Yeah.
Yeah. The sixth, wouldn't we write after, we're having an election, right?
No, there's usually one before the election.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I'll set that up and move it forward. Okay, one-day liquor license.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion to, I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for St. Mary's Church for May 16th, 2017, for their volunteer appreciation dinner.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion for street closure for Long Meadow Days.
Okay, I'll, I'll move we approve the street closure for Long Meadow Days for May 20th and 21st, and it's the street closure that's the one-way street in front of the community, yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Some things I didn't talk about before. There are a few things I want to talk about under the subcommittee reports. That's where I'm going to stick it in. One is the memorial luncheon was provided to DPW on Friday, and they really appreciated. It was a hot luncheon ordered from Armadas, from the Select Board. And even though I cut back the amount of food, because I was originally expecting 40, we went down to 30. We were coming. There was some leftovers, so that was brought over to the police and fire to also thank them. And I explained it was from the Select Board, memorial luncheon, and they appreciated that. The other two things I wanted to talk to everyone, and I'm going to send out a notice, and that is, "I'd like to get a regional Select Board meeting together." We had talked when we had that one, that we were going to do it, and maybe set something up in the next few weeks. And we were talking about breakfast for nonprofits, but I don't see how we're going to get that done. And I'll just pass that off to Tom. Maybe Tom will want to put that together.
That's if John is put in for the chair.
Yeah, if Tom gets the chair. And...
A little technicality there.
Yes, exactly. So the, those were the only two things. A lot of things happened this week. We had the library volunteer program, and it was the first time we had the PINS and for the volunteers, depending on how many years they were there. And that was really appreciated by the volunteers. And the Tree Arbor Day was really a fabulous day. They were, the gardeners, Long Meadow Gardeners gave out flowering trees to all the children in town. I think it was the fourth grade, and that was really appreciated. And then, of course, the shops opened with the capsule, time capsule they put together, which is only going to be open in 20 years, not 50 or 100. So that was the events that are happening and we're pulling together. Any other subcommittee reports? No? Town manager?
Richard.
No, I didn't, I had, I just had a real quick question for Stephen. Are you going to have a DPW tent at the Long Meadow Days? Okay.
Looking for volunteers.
Yeah, I'll put in some time.
Bless you. I should have you sit here next time. So briefly, I just have, I did write a few executive summaries. I wrote five executive summaries of some, to encapsulate some of the larger warrant articles. I put them in the packet. They have not been distributed publicly. I put them in the packet for your review and comment. If you don't have any comments, then I will put them on the website and on the Facebook page. I will send them to the moderator to see if they can be distributed. We had a conversation about literature not being distributed in town meeting because it's potentially like opinion statements versus factual information. She feels that this is just the facts and explains what people are voting on, not telling them how to vote, then she may allow them to be given out, like with the warrant. We did talk about having some boards, both the proponents of the DIF and Weston and Sampson. I think we'll have boards available. We've talked about where we can set them up. And people are going to be clear, they cannot tell people how to vote. They can just answer questions and explain what's being voted on. So, please, if you haven't had a chance, just take a look at those summaries and give me any comments you may have. I will then ignore the comments and send them out anyway. That's hard to figure. And that's about it. So DPW open house I mentioned, 12 to noon. We'll have some refreshments. Good chance for the community to come see the, really up close and personal of the needs. And then we have had some discussions, we have had some discussions about Long Meadow Days. That'll be the 20th, 21st. We will have a booth. We've been doing some planning. We are going to reduce the number of cannons. A lot of times the cannon fires. We've got some feedback from folks that it's had a pretty negative effect on our K-9 unit and some other, quite honestly, some veterans.
And children and...
Children and veterans who are there. We've gotten some specific feedback that it just, it just is too much. And it's too unpredictable. I mean, I know they have kind of a schedule and they fire the bugle, but I was standing, you know, 200 feet away and I couldn't hear the bugle. So I talked to the gentleman who coordinates that, and he very generously immediately said, "Yep, whatever you want, we'll cut it down." And I said, "Maybe once in the morning, once at night, and just tell me the schedule. We'll post the schedule on like a grease board. If, like, you're doing something else and the schedule changes, we can erase it and do a new time." But they were very cooperative, and I appreciate that. One last, one last note on the regi, oh, sorry.
Well, no, I mean, if you're going to do the cannon, you should do it in the middle of the day when people are going to be there. You don't want to do it in the morning and night. You do it in the middle of the day.
They're doing it.
Middle of the day, they do other stuff, too.
All the time.
I told, I just said, "Can you get me a schedule of a couple of times you want to do it?" Friday, I was in Chickapi, meeting with the group for the regional dispatch, and just suffice it to say that it's coming together, I think. We've had a strong meeting of the minds from all parties. And I think if things play out the way I hope they will, we will achieve that higher level of service in this new model. And I think the financial savings will be, you know, we've never really talked about the savings. We've said better service for the same money. I think there's the opportunity to actually save some money because of the reimbursement that Chickapi is working on from the state. And then the final thing is on the rail crossing, Tino Lane Crossing, we have had continuing dialogue with Mass DOT and some other stakeholders. And it is on our radar screen. We are working at it. Virtually every part of it is out of our control. And so I just want people to be patient with us and know that we're going to do everything we can to get it going as fast as we can. But even if someone, even if we knew how much it was going to cost, and someone gave us the money, we still couldn't do it. It takes sign-offs by multiple agencies from the state. We don't own the property. Amtrak does. And even if all of that fell into place tomorrow, it would still be a year because of contracting issues. It's six-month, minimum six-month lead time on the parts. And so I just, best-case scenario, we're looking at, you know, a year at least before we see, before we may see any action. And it's not because we're not trying.
Could we suggest that we not let trains run through the town for a year?
No, you cannot. You can suggest it, but they can tell you, they can tell you where to put that suggestion.
It's outrageous, you know.
Well, I mean, it's been that way for a long time, and everyone understands the issues. Everyone's committed. It's just one of those processes. And I wish, I wish it weren't so, but it is. And I don't want to mislead people saying, "Yeah, yeah, we're going to get it, we're going to get it, we're going to get it."
Right.
I'd rather tell people honestly, "We are going to get it. It's just not going to be in a timeline that's going to satisfy really anybody."
Yeah, which puts us in a tough position in terms of opening that road and making decisions about it.
Richard?
Are you going to set up anything with LCTV to maybe do a live interview at Long Meadow Days?
They usually are right next door to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
It'd be a good time to get a soundbite out on DPW.
Yeah.
In regards to the rail crossing, you'll just keep us informed as each meeting comes along and how far we've moved the project down the road.
I just don't, I just, I wouldn't hope for biweekly updates because it's not, it's one of those things that's just going to move that fast.
Is there any communication going external at this point, Stephen? Are you keeping anybody external informed of progress?
Meaning like the media and the family?
General public.
Just for this means, yeah.
Okay, so there's no communication?
When there's, when there's something to report, I think the general public shouldn't, like through a media release or something like that, I'll absolutely do it. We're just not there yet. There hasn't been something that rises to that level.
Okay.
Were you, are you thinking that we should name names of the people who...
We had concerned citizens in there a couple of times, and I was wondering, they seem to be speaking for the whole area. I was wondering if they're being kept in a loop of how we're moving forward.
They met tonight.
Yeah, with the meeting tonight.
They met tonight with Senator Lester and Representative Nash.
Okay, okay. So then, but I mean, from your, from your angle, was that shared with them tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the other, we met with, we met with, we met with the senator and the representative earlier to brief them where we were.
But I think Richard's right. I think when we get information, we probably should reach out and say, "This is what's happened. You know, this has happened today, the meeting occurred, and we're keeping, keeping the project." But that's going to be discussed tonight because we've talked about what would be communicated. And as things come up, we'll follow through on that, too, Richard.
Yeah, it's just, it's just keep people in the loop. That's all.
Maria, I just have another item, unrelated item. Tomorrow afternoon and evening and long into the night, there will be interviews for the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority's new director. There are three candidates, and I'll be attending on behalf of the town of Long Meadow. So my assumption is that by the end of tomorrow night, there'll be a new director appointed. The prior director retired last Friday. There's an interim director been appointed. There are three current candidates. I can give you all the details, but I'm not sure anybody, it was in the paper for people who really want to know. But final interviews are tomorrow. They're public. They're at the Holyoke Transit Authority Building in Holyoke. If anybody, they're open to the public, if people want to go, starting at, I believe, 3:30 or 4:00 PM, going until they're done.
Well, thank you for your representation on the board.
Yeah, and Maria, I think they have not voted on that intermunicipal... Yeah, and Marie, I think they have not voted on that intermunicipal agreement for our senior right pilot project. They have it. They have, meaning they have the draft. And I think that they're waiting to clear up the hiring process and things like that. But that still will be forthcoming, at an upcoming meeting.
Well, is that going to mess us up with the town meeting?
Don't need a town meeting.
We don't need a town meeting. Okay, good. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We'll hold a second there.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you for joining us, and we hope to see you at our two-night town meeting, May 9th and 10th, Tuesday and Wednesday. Thank you.